I want to open the Dayton Conservation Commission meeting. This public meeting is opening at 7:00 PM at the Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue. This meeting is video and audio recorded for cable broadcast and internet posting on www.dighton-mass.gov and YouTube. Would everyone stand please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, first item on the agenda is to review, discuss act on the minutes from June of this past, of this year. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from June?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion then to accept the minutes from June?
So who?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, July we will, we will deal with that and at April, minutes in September.
Oh, you guys have a copy of the, I think there's a copy of the July minutes.
Lisa wanted to...
Yeah, I just, I just got them yesterday.
Okay, that's what I'm doing. I thought this was, this was typed right.
Yeah, there's a few things.
Okay, alright, alright.
Okay. Next, we have a resignation of an associate member. Lenny Hell said, please accept this notice as of August 8th, 2024. I will be resigning my position as associate member of the Dayton Conservation Commission for personal reasons. Is there a motion to accept his resignation?
Motion to accept resignation from London Hall.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have a new member, that makes a new member opening. Abel Mariano is our associate member and would someone like to make the motion to, to add Abel as our full member to the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose a motion that Abel Mariano be, we request the board to select and appoint Abel Mariano as a full voting member of the Conservation Conservation Commission.
So who?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Abel with officially, when they approve you at the, as the, at the selectmen's meeting, you will be full-fledged member. But please retain your seat and gather all the information that you can.
Congratulations. I think you're going to be able to benefit from it.
Okay. Uh, next, we have an Enrad application by Dean Smith of New Leaf Energy LLC at Zero Mained Lane, map one lots eighty-two and eighty-two dash seven and ninety-six, DEP file number seventeen four seventy-six. Continuance requested by Dean Smith to five thirty, site inspected with, with beta and New Leaf consultant occurred on five one. Beta will be in attendance to present this peer review report. The vernal pool certification is in process by the consultant. Do we have a...
That, that was, sorry, that was for last meeting. They were here. Dean Smith is running late. He's here, he's coming. He said the traffic was terrific. He's not here, correct?
Motion to table?
Yeah, table's fully good, yeah.
Set.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, we have an abbreviated notice of area resource delineation from Carl Rabello, Bell's Farm Estate, seeking confirmation of wetland resources at Zero Milk Street, map seventeen lots one oh nine, one thirty-five, and two zero eight, file number seventeen dash four eighty-nine. Site visit between applicant and Weston and Sampson being conducted at five ten. Scope of peer review services provided by Watson, Weston and Sampson for phase three. Monies received on seven ten and proposal signed on seven ten, same day. Awaiting Weston and Sampson's review.
We did, Weston and Sampson did review, start reviewing it based on the next proposal, but we need a continuance because that is not complete at this time.
I'm sorry, what's not completed?
The review, the field work was worked on this week, but it wasn't able to be finished. Yeah.
Okay, so did they request it, the west, I mean, did applicant request or...
He was told on the phone that he's going to need a continuance. I didn't know if he was going to show up or not, but I don't, I don't think he's here. Carl Rabello?
Okay, is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue, Bell Farm Estate, to our next meeting, um, nineteen, September nineteenth. So who?
All in favor?
Aye.
To, let's see, that's nine nineteen, you said.
And point of, point of information, Mr. Chairman, I'm not playing with my phone and following along with the schedule. So everybody's aware.
Okay, next, we have a hearing, a notice of intent from Ahmed Hafzaz of Grasshopper Energy, Zero Brook Street, file number seventeen dash four ninety-two, and that has been on table to an uncertain date. Lisa, that is still continued?
Yes.
Okay, a motion?
Motion, that's correct. Motion to continue to September nineteenth. Second.
All in favor?
Well, it was, it was tabled, I mean, you know, you don't...
Right, is there a, do we have a need to vote on that in the future until they get further accurate?
No.
Okay, here we have abbreviated notice of resource area delineation, application from David E. Butler, seeking confirmation of wetland resources at eight three three, William Street, map eight lot twenty, file number seventeen dash four ninety-nine. Weston and Sampson peer review report issued on eight two twenty-four, awaiting prime's response. Further review from Weston and Sampson will require a new scope fee. Is there anyone here from the applicant? Lisa, okay, so they're going to add money to the fees for additional...
Well, we are waiting for a response from them, and at that point, then we can provide the response to Weston and Sampson, and they can provide us with a proposal.
Okay, so that the response would be whether they want to continue to...
Well, if, once they respond to her comments...
Okay.
They have to provide a revised narrative and plan.
Okay.
And when they do that, then Weston and Sampson will have more review.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, would you be willing to entertain a motion to allow Lisa to accept on the commission's behalf, an updated scope and proposal in the meantime, if it should come in before our next meeting?
Uh, yes, I would.
So who?
Thank you.
Um, okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, abbreviated note, abbreviated notice of resource area delineation from Antonio Almeida, TNA Realty Trust, seeking confirmation of wetland resources at Zero William Street, map twenty-one lot twenty, plan prepared by Riverhawk Environmental, DEP file number seventeen dash five hundred. Site visit conducted by Weston and Sampson and peer review report issued six thirteen. Phase B scope of services by Weston and Sampson received and nineteen hundred twenty dollars received on seven ten. Additional site visit conducted, awaiting phase B Weston and Sampson review.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name's Bob Nollet of Riverhawk Environmental. I'm just unfolding the revised plans here that we submitted on past...
What's John's name?
Uh, Vino. Basically, we came in front of the commission once before, I believe we gave a brief presentation on the Enrad, the properties located. I apologize for not having an easel, but it's on the easterly side of William Street, and there's three areas of bordering vegetated wetland delineated by the, or four, the A, C, B, and D lines. And they kind of, the A series is on the southwestern portion of the property. It circles a vernal pool. The B series is on the, the eastern portion of the property, and that also, there's a vernal pool present in that area. And then there's a C series that's present along William Street. That C series connects over, there's, we originally had that delineated as an isolated land subject to flooding. The consultant noted that there's a connection across the street to, through a culvert, to another wetland system, so we've now called that a bordering vegetated wetland. The, when we did the original delineation, Weston and Sampson had concern of flags A seven through A eleven, so they met LEC, the people who delineated the, the wetlands for us out at the site, and they got agreed upon location for flag A seven to A eleven, and we now show those on the plans as A seven R through A eleven R. So it just, it bumped out a little, a little further into the field that exists there. And that's, that's, basically, at Weston and Sampson, I believe, was in agreement with the, with the rest of the flag locations, and we are assuming the vernal pools were inspected by Brad Holmes of ECR in, I believe, early April, and, and he saw signs that these were, in fact, probably vernal pools, so we will treat them going forward with the permitting, permitting as, as vernal pools.
Lisa, could you have refreshed me on the, the buffer zones for vernal pools?
Uh, there's a hundred foot off of the main annual high water and then, which is part of the vernal pool, and then a hundred feet off of that is the regulated buffer.
Okay, so is that represented here on this plan? It should be though.
Well, no, there's, they're not directly represented, no, but, so no.
Uh, the other thing is we've been requiring certification of the vernal pools, so I don't know if we could just do that in the, sorry?
For what reason? I'm, my concern is we're going to want to proceed with permitting, and we're not going to be able to certify until next year.
Okay, well, we could put it as a condition of the ORW.
Yeah, yes.
So this is the one hundred foot, that, yeah, they actually, Bob, they need to be...
Well, that's, yeah, it's vernal pools right there. So it's outside of that, but there's a, so like you're saying under local bylaw, there's a hundred foot, and then local bylaw above that, a hundred fifty, that correct?
Right, and a twenty, yeah, and then twenty five foot, no disbarment with on that.
Right.
I would just relax, I think you guys can make sure that you have a...
Yeah, if we're, if we're otherwise in agreement on where the resources are, I mean, I don't think we need to hold it up to...
Yeah, I would like it on the ground, just seeing how it's...
Yeah, yeah, no, no, when I, you know, if they confirm the resource area, they'll pitch you the wetland.
Do you have any, any questions or concerns otherwise?
No, Weston and Sampson, they're trying to get them...
Cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Lisa, what else are we looking forward on this?
Megan, I think they answered everything, right?
Yes, there were just a couple more administrative things that maybe still need to be addressed from the first letter that we sent, which is just, there were two different numbers listed for the total length of BBW on the Enrad form, so just revising that so that they have a plan.
I did submit revised forms, maybe they didn't get in, but I do apologize, but they were, they were submitted.
Oh, that's why, um, and then just submitting the BBW data forms as backup.
Again, those, we had LEC go out there specially and redo those forms, so those, I believe they were submitted, is that correct?
Okay. Yep, I'll confirm that, so contingent upon...
Well, I, I one hundred percent have those because they made a special trip back out there to, to do that.
Yeah, just so they're on the record for the commission. I agree with all the, the wetland location flags, it's more just, um, as, as backup, and then just making sure all of the buffer zones are on the plan, but it sounds like you guys are talking about that, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're in agreement on all of the, all the flags and the fields, and they adjusted that on the plan as well.
So we're looking for approval then of the delineations?
Yep.
Yes, the Enrad.
Enrad, so you're going to vote to issue an ORW, I think contingent upon a revised plan with the buffers? When do you think you could have that?
I will have it to you electronically tomorrow.
Okay, we're not open tomorrow, but that's great.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. So contingent upon the revised plan to include the buffer zones and the data, ensuring the data forms were submitted?
Okay, so looking for an acceptance with the der...
Actually, I, they might be, the data forms may be in the file, why don't I look? Too many files here.
I, I can easily just make sure they get resubmitted tomorrow to Lisa if you want.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would propose a motion to accept the Enrad, subject to confirmation of the updated documentation and updated the plan to reflect the buffer zone for the vernal pool.
Is there a second? Okay, is there a motion, is there a vote? We got a, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate the time, thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Next, we have an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation from Tyler, seeking confirmation of wetland resources at Zero Oak Street, map six lot nineteen thirteen and fourteen eight, file number seventeen dash five zero two. Weston and Sampson peer review report received on seven eleven, awaiting vernal pool certification and stream delineation. Is there someone here representing the applicant?
Um, no, not at this time, so I believe Maureen received a continuance for this one. Let me just double check.
Okay, so we, we'll continue it till September?
Yeah, so we're waiting for the screen, stream, and the stream to be delineated and the vernal pool certifications.
Now, this, this, the stream is the one that you and I had talked about?
No, this is, um...
Oh, no, I'm sorry, this is, that's another zero address. Okay, is, is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue to September nineteenth. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, notice of intent, application from Lee Castanetti, LBH Hunters Hill LLC to Constructive Community Center, along with associated mailboxes, parking, pool, and sports court, along with associated clearing and grading at Hunters Hill, map twenty-one lot six six A, seven A, twelve twenty-three thirty-seven dash forty-six, and map twenty-two lots five and six dash two, and map twenty-three lot eight. A portion of the work falls within jurisdictional wetland resources, file number seventeen dash five oh eight. Peer review is needed, and Weston and Sampson proposal was received on seven seventeen. A fee of six thousand four hundred fifteen dollars received and proposed, and proposed executed on seven twenty-nine. Stormwater material received, phase B Weston and Sampson peer review, contract requested, additional funds of forty-seven hundred twenty dollars, and received and proposed execution on work eight six. Okay, Lisa, where is that now?
Um, we're waiting a schedule from Weston and Sampson.
Uh, to review the, the property and, okay.
So Evan Watson requested a continuance.
Okay, is there a motion to continue?
So who?
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Weston will have that for the next meeting. In time for your review.
Weston and Sampson's a busy group.
We're keeping them...
Okay, next, we have a notice of intent from Robert and Carol Nollet at Zero Maple Swamp Road, map one lot nine eight to construct a proposed bond and yard area. A portion of the work falls within jurisdictional wetland resources, file number seventeen dash five hundred. Peer review is needed, and Weston and Sampson proposal was received on July first in the amount of sixty-one hundred dollars. Monies received and proposal executed on seven twenty-three. Site visit was conducted, Weston and Sampson is finalizing their report. Lisa, I have a possible conflict here on, on Antonio Almeida, we got a file number of seventeen five hundred, and here we have, or did I read it wrong?
Seven, this is five oh nine, I think, because we had all those Hunters Hill ones in between. I looked at that too. You have five oh nine, right?
Five oh nine.
DEP file number?
Yes, we do.
Five oh nine, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you're right.
Oh, five oh seven?
Five oh seven. That's the one that said approve it.
I just, just so you know, I just handed on this, just as a...
Okay.
Just so that they can have it to hand, just, just a blow up of the map.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to show Lisa what's...
Good evening, members of the commission. I'm Brad Holmes with ECR. I'm a professional wetland scientist and Massachusetts certified arborist. Been a while since I've been in front of the board at a meeting. We filed a notice of intent for Zero Maple Swamp Road. The applicant, Bob Nollet, is here with me this evening. We tried to get, we tried to get our ducks in a row before we opened the presentation with the commission. We, we did file, we did receive a DEP file number, we had a chance to meet on site with Megan and with Weston and Sampson and do a review of the site. What I've given you is just something that hopefully is easy to review. The site in general is a large fourteen acre parcel of land on the north side of Maple Swamp Road, Mr. Nollet lives adjacent to it, to the east. There are several wetland resource areas on the site. There's a bordering vegetated wetland, an isolated vegetated wetland, we have a hundred foot buffer zone, we have inland bank to a perennial stream, and we have a two hundred foot riverfront area. Although this site is a large site and contains many resource areas, we've tried to avoid altering any resource areas with a proposed project, so we've crafted a, a project, as you'll see on sheet two, which is just a blow up of this proposed conditions plan, so you can kind of take a look. I, I gave the sheet once, you can kind of see a general layout of the first half of the site. The notice of intent has full site plans, if, if you want to look at that further. But what we've done in the notice of intent is proposed two activities within the buffer zone to bordering, to, one to a bordering vegetated wetland, one to an isolated vegetated wetland. What we're proposing is a driveway off the, the road to a home and a yard, which is outside the jurisdictional areas of the Conservation Commission. But what is within jurisdiction is we're proposing a, a yard area to, which would be associated with this house. Yard area is outside the fifty foot buffer zone. You can see that, here's the hundred foot buffer zone to the IVW here, so it's approximately, I think it's like fifty-five feet away of what we're proposing to remove the vegetation in that portion of the buffer zone and create a yard, not within the twenty-five foot no-touch zone, not within the fifty foot no-build zone. We are also proposing a barn to the east of this area. The barn is located in the outer buffer zone of bordering vegetated wetland. It's outside the fifty foot buffer zone, outside the twenty-five foot no-touch. And see what we're doing is putting an area of limited disturbance, it would be a walkout basement because it slopes there, so we can use that topography and minimize the amount of filling there. So we have work in the buffer zone to this bordering vegetated wetland. We're outside the riverfront, we've made sure that we stay outside the two hundred foot riverfront area. You can see that purple line that comes through here, here's the two hundred foot riverfront to the perennial stream here. As I mentioned, we did get a chance to walk the site with Megan Kearns, professional wetland scientist, and we did review the wetland flags, the, the stream location, the isolated wetland, and other portions of the site to confirm what we have here in front of you. We did get a peer review response, we did get a peer review letter from Weston and Sampson. There were a dozen or so items, many of the items didn't need to be responded to, but we did have five or six items to respond to, which we got to the commission Monday morning. I have three copies of that. The plan didn't necessarily change the one we didn't give that to these guys a year ago.
Uh, yeah, they had electronic copies, but sometimes we, we really like it like a week ahead, you know, just so you know.
Sure. And also, that was, that was my bad for sending it, less than...
Yeah, we got it, I know, we're all, I know, we got it, we tried to get it to you as soon as we could. We got it on Thursday, and we got, just submitted back to you on, on Monday morning. The, we can go through the, the items of response if you like, I think, I, I don't, I don't know if Megan has any comments towards those because we haven't gone back and forth on the response letter, but in my opinion, most of the items were addressable and have been addressed.
Megan's here to present today too, so everybody's aware.
I'm happy to walk through the remaining comments, or...
Yeah, did you have a presentation?
I did have a presentation, but...
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, you can.
I'll, I'll let Brad stay up there. So I can skip a couple of these slides because you guys are aware of where the product's located. So these are a couple of technical comments. After doing a quick look through your revised letter, I think all three of these have been addressed, which is just checking that the site is located within an ORW. AC mix was provided to the commission for their records, and proof of a better mailing was also submitted. I know we mentioned this when we were in the field, that the two hundred foot riverfront area looked a little off. I, I did a couple of spot calculations, and it looks like it varies two hundred to two hundred ten feet. It's more just to make sure all your numbers are accurate on your forms, so I know you're not doing any work in the riverfront area, but if you plan to, that might be something that you want to adjust.
Okay.
And just to add the fifty foot no-build zone to the plans on the wetlands.
And we did that on the revised plans.
Okay, great. And then... And then we were in agreement of all of the wetland lines when we met on site. There were a few bordering vegetated wetlands, one isolated wetland, and a perennial stream. And these are just some photos for the commission, just to give you a sense. This is the representative BVW, this is the perennial stream right here, and this is that isolated wetland sea that's sort of in the middle western portion of the site. So I think there are a couple things maybe to discuss between us and the commission. One of them is this ditch that's located on the plane here, crossing the proposed access road. So that is, it appears to be a man-made ditch that sort of goes across the site. Brad can maybe give you some more information on how that was constructed. Under the Wetlands Protection Act, it would not be jurisdictional because it does not originate from a wetland, and in the Wetlands Protection Act, that is a clause that it must originate from a wetland to be a jurisdictional stream. However, under the Dighton bylaw, the bylaw does state any freshwater or coastal wetlands and lists all of these resource areas, so it's a little up to interpretation if that would fall under, be jurisdictional under the Dighton Wetland bylaw. And I've got just a couple photos of that ditch up here. This is sort of, it begins back in here, it's a little overgrown with sweet pepper bush. It opens out here, you can see it going underneath this little piece of wood that people use to walk across, and continues down this way into BVWA, that large wetland system. And there is this bridge here crossing it as well. I don't know if you want to stop here and.
Sure. One, before we get on, if we can just separate things so we don't go on the wrong track.
Sure.
Before we get in my, into this discussion and get into areas that are outside the jurisdiction of the, what we filed, because we can go there and I have a response for that, but are there any other, are there any other areas of the project within jurisdiction of the commission that you want to go over before we get into areas outside of jurisdiction that we get kind of wrapped around the axle on? Because I'd want to just nail things that we submitted in the notice of intent, and I'll get into the other areas if you like, but I just, I just don't want to go off on a, on a tangent that's not part of what we filed the notice of intent. I'm going to get into this and answer the question, but I just, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, and then you forget about, hey, wait a minute, I kind of had a question about the barn or the yard area.
Yeah, so there's a few things that I have in addition to the access road. So you don't show any contours in like the northern part of the site where the isolated wetland is?
That, that area is generally flat, we're not looking to, all we're looking to do is a yard, so it would be clearing the veget, it's not a steep slope there, so it would be to remove the vegetation, grub it, and then loam and seed it.
Okay, well, I, I just wanted to, the idea that it's not hydrologically connected, that it's isolated, I just wanted a little bit more information if you could provide that to us, that it's not hydrologically connected, because the BVW offsite is right there, and then the riverfront. So there was that, and then the other thing.
Hold on one sec so we can hit that. Yeah, that, if you go to the sheet, I don't have it in your handout, but on the, on your, on your pages there, the existing conditions, sheet two, that's a fully isolated wetland system. It's not connected hydraulically. If it were, then it would be bordering vegetated wetland. So we've wrapped that wetland all the way around to confirm that it's isolated.
Okay, you didn't give me what you gave them, let me see.
I don't have that on that sheet. It's on the existing conditions sheet two.
Got it.
That's C-series wetland.
Okay, yeah, so I guess the question is, to me is, are you positive that it doesn't connect to the A-series wetland?
A hundred percent. And we're treating it as a vegetated wetland under the bylaw, so it has all the protection that Dighton affords to vegetated wetlands. So it doesn't matter to us if it's isolated or bordering, we're treating it either way, but it is, it has a buffer, and we're handling it 25 feet no-touch, 50 foot no-build.
You said your plans for the yard are really just clearing and grading, no build, or anything like that?
It's generally flat, we don't have to do much there, correct.
Did you say you added a 50-foot no-build to this revised plan?
The revised plans that are submitted there, that three package, yes, that has a 50-foot no-touch zones on the site plans.
I mean, should specify no-build.
Oh yeah, it does say 50-foot buffer, but.
Yep.
That's something that could be corrected.
We can certainly put buffer to no-build, I mean, our intent is that we're outside of that with all, with all work. We're not even proposing any disturbance, although you would allow up to 25 at your discretion, we're not even going into the 50.
So, yeah, so let's talk about the ditch some more. I would like Megan to continue for our presentation, so obviously you need access.
Just to confirm, have we satisfied everything up to the ditch discussion, all the other aforementioned pieces, are we?
Oh, but the, so I don't, I don't really like straw walls.
Okay, we can, whatever is.
I don't find them very useful, so filter traps.
Sure, whatever the commission's comfortable with, we would use.
I mean, it was, I like the plan to depict it, even though I will put it in a corner.
Okay.
So. I only have one copy of this paper.
Be in the, I give, the three copies had the, should have three sets of, three full.
There's still not the paper over here, please.
I know, I hear you.
All right, let me try to find it. I only, I only do have one paper plan of that, for whatever reason.
There should be two, Dina's consulting, which are these existing conditions planes, and then one, the proposed conditions.
Okay. She has the number. Good night.
So the existing conditions is two, is lower number.
If it's, if it's otherwise exempted, the Wetland Protection Act. I'm a little dubious about considering every farmer's ditch.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, this is what this really is.
So on this case, I don't think it is a farmer's ditch, so can you?
Sure, so I can get into the ditch, I just didn't want to, I didn't want to go there until you guys were trying to check one, check boxes as we move through the application. So this is a ditch that was created by Mr. Nolette when he created the, he built the property to the west of the accessway. It's a hand-dug ditch that he created so that it wouldn't, it would help.
Right here, guys.
It would help shed water off the abutting property. It ends at the end of the backyard, it, you can see the cut, it comes up. For this to be a jurisdiction, for it to be a jurisdictional resource area such as a stream, it would have to flow, it would have to flow from a wetland resource area. You'd have to have like a pond or vegetated wetland above it, so that it would, once you have a wetland up gradient, and that wetland flows to this ditch, that ditch is a jurisdictional intermittent stream with banks. Because we don't have an up gradient wetland resource area, it's, it's, it ends in the, in its backyard, it's not a jurisdictional resource area, so it's not a stream, doesn't meet the definition of a stream, and Megan defined that in her peer review. Now, we looked at the Town of Dighton Wetlands bylaw.
Chairman, she's, she has something more to say about that part, too.
Okay, let's just listen here, then we'll, okay.
Yeah, if I could just finish through, so it's not a jurisdictional resource area under the state, and it's not a jurisdictional resource area under your bylaw either. Your bylaw has definitions in there, and it doesn't have a different definition of stream, and it also says in your bylaw, if you, if the definitions aren't in this section, then refer to the State Wetlands Protection Act. I have the bylaw here, we can, we can look at that. But I did take this for the commission.
No, pass around. This is MACC's kind of guidance that helps commissioners understand, you know, stream because it can be confusing. Basically, I highlighted the section that helps, where it's a section of a ditch that's up gradient of a wetland resource area, is not a jurisdictional wetland. It only becomes jurisdictional until it hits the wetland or flows from the wetland. So if you look at this, this stream here, when this ditch hits that A-series wetland where it bulges out, bingo, that's your, that's your stream, that's your jurisdictional stream, and the rest of that stream is within the bordering vegetated wetland, it's a jurisdictional stream. That portion of the ditch that's circled in red, that's up gradient of the BVW is a ditch, not a jurisdictional wetland resource area. So is that confusing for the commission, maybe, because it's, it's hard, because you don't deal with that every day? We're proposing a culvert under, in where we're going to cross with the gravel driveway. Mr. Nolette created that, if I, Lisa, if I can just get the commission's attention.
Please.
I know, but I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to leave somebody out here. Mr. Nolette created that ditch, he has no intention to block that ditch, so if there's additional discussion, we can, but as I said, it's not, it's not, it's not jurisdictional to the commission.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'll, up on the screen is just part of the Dighton Wetland bylaw that I thought might apply to this project. It is, and this I think is common in a lot of bylaws that I've seen, the word "any" at the beginning of what's jurisdictional, which sort of encompasses anything that the commission wants to extend their jurisdiction over if it's listed. It is a little ambiguous here, and I think that's why it's a discussion to figure out if it's jurisdictional or not under the bylaw, because as Brad said, it is not jurisdictional under the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act.
Yeah, which is one of the reasons why I reached out to DEP, as we had conversations with them.
And I spoke to DEP as well, I think you may have spoken with Jackie about it, Jackie was the one that issued the file number. Jackie's relatively new at DEP, so she doesn't have the experience that, that we all have, and my understanding is that they weren't commenting on, on this as far as, until it gets to a, you know, to a DEP matter.
So, yeah, so what she did say was that, you know, we can certainly require, I'm just concerned about protecting the down gradient resources, so if that ditch is carrying water, it's carrying flow down gradient, which is into public drinking water supply zone, right, so it's feeding.
How often do you think that it is?
I think it's probably intermittent, but in any case, I think that it needs something more than just, let's put a culvert under there. I would like to see it meet some of the stream crossing standards. I don't know what Megan's thoughts are.
Yeah, I think it's worth looking into, if there are some crossing standards that you can meet in this location. It does look like it flows enough because there are a couple bridges over there.
So the bridges are, are, you know, down gradient of this location. The, if you're looking at that top left photo, that's the end of the ditch, you can almost see the yard in the background, so you're looking at a very small section of ditch before it hits the driveway location. We did put in our response letter that we're going to put an adequately sized culvert, we're not looking to block, block the flowage of water here. As I said, Mr. Nolette dug this ditch out himself, it's a man-made ditch.
Can you elaborate on that?
And we actually, we actually put a, I asked Mr. Nolette for a statement, it's included in the response package as an email, and I'll.
When was this ditch dug?
It's, it was 2004, 2005. If you look at, I put an email, you can read it in your packet, we'll save it from Mr. Nolette on that. But I guess what I, where I wanted to be cautious with the commission is, we're calling, we're calling, you're calling it or referencing it as a stream. It's not, it's not a jurisdictional resource area. The jurisdictional resource areas have been reviewed on the site, we've delineated, and we've confirmed with that. The driveway that crosses over the ditch will include a culvert because we're not looking to, I mean, he created it, why would he want to block it? We're not, we're not doing that.
Sounds like you defeat the original purpose of wanting to block.
Well, certainly include erosion control measures, and this, this actually flows, I think some of this wetland system is certainly next to Mr. Nolette's property or onto his property, so we're not looking to have a messy operation where we have sediment down into the wetland systems or buffer zone.
Okay, are there wetlands up gradient to that?
No, sir, not up gradient of this, not up gradient of this ditch.
I think there probably were at one point when that house was built, and Mr. Nolette and I had a conversation with the town administrator and the building inspector at one point, I think Dave was there, but we talked about how the house, when you built it, needed to be drained because there was so, it was so wet in the basement, right?
No, it's because he had a walkout basement, no luck. So I turned it and it go down.
I wasn't around yet then, and I'm just bringing it to the.
What we do know now is that it's, it doesn't have an up gradient source. Megan and I have reviewed that in the field. We can spend more time on non-jurisdictional areas, I just caution the commission, we're outside of your jurisdiction.
The up gradient source is actually the yard now, so when this house was built in '05, this, you know, this yard expanded and pushed water out, and I think that's why at the front of the lot, I thought it was a jurisdictional area that Mr. Nolette had explained to us that you had been piping out, draining.
Right, there's some pumps that come up into that area.
Some pumps into the front yard of this lot, but.
And we've confirmed that that's not a wetland resource area?
It's on the branch.
I was going to say, that's the next couple slides of my presentation.
It's not, we've documented that, and it's in the report, and Megan and I have confirmed that.
That's fine, but I think it's transitional, I think.
I mean, what we've done is we've done a full, in order to come and open up this meeting with the commission, I've tried to get all our ducks in a row. We, we filed, we held, we paid the peer review fee, we had the peer review, we've nailed everything in the field, we've responded to that. Now, if we're going to be going outside of areas to, you know, open up the peer review in different areas because it's not suitable for what we've confirmed, that's kind of defeats the purpose of getting the peer review and confirming the resource areas in order to come to the commission.
I don't think Megan's done, though, so.
Well, I was just going to say, it's not jurisdictional under the Wetlands Protection Act, but it, in my eyes, I think it might be under.
And I can, and that's why we have, right, so the Town of Dighton Wetlands bylaw, but if it's a, if it's an area of protection under your bylaw, separate from the state, you have certain definitions that you define. You define bank, you define vernal pool, rare species.
You're talking in the bylaw in your packet.
You know, so you have, you have, you have definitions that are, that you've defined. You haven't defined a ditch, you haven't defined a channel, you haven't defined a stream separately. But what you do say is, except as otherwise provided in this bylaw or its regulations, which the commission hasn't adopted regulations yet. The definitions and terms of this bylaw set forth shall, shall be set forth in the Wetlands Protection Act and its regulations, meaning if you don't have it in your definition section, go to the Wetlands Protection Regulations. So I've looked at this thoroughly, I've gone through the MACC handbook to be able to give the commission some guidance on that. It's a, it's a non-jurisdictional ditch. Nevertheless, we're going to put a culvert in it and make sure there's no blockage, and we're not going to have messy construction activities in there. We're not looking to impact the flow of the water that comes off the neighbor's backyard.
Okay, I'm looking for action that the commission can take.
Do you want Megan to finish her presentation?
I thought she was.
I do have a couple more slides.
Okay, I thought you had finished, sorry.
No, sorry, we.
Once she's done, I've got a couple of slides I'd like to share.
Okay.
And this, I think, will be a little quick, but. And this, I think, will be a little quick, but we were sort of just alluding to this area. So the ditch that we were just talking about is right here. And then there is this sort of transitional questionable area down in here that Brad Holmes submitted some revised materials with some information on soils and hydrology, saying it's not a wetland. When I was out there during the site visit, I agreed that the soils were not hydroic soils. It did have sort of a mix of wetland and upland vegetation in the area and not a predominance of wetland vegetation. And there wasn't any clear hydrology. It looks like water might sit there occasionally, but there's no standing water, no signs of hydrology in this area. So based on the site visit, I agree that this likely is not currently a wetland. And I, I included just a couple of photos of this area. You can see there's some Virginia creeper over here. There is some jewel weed, which is a fact wet plant that can grow in a lot of disturbed areas as well. There was some cinnamon fern, some white pine, red maple. So kind of a mix of, of wetland and upland vegetation. This is kind of hard to see at the scale, but the, the soils were fairly bright. I didn't see any redoxymorphic features in them indicating that it's hydroic. So, and I think you concurred with that in your report as well. We had similar soil profiles.
And I think that when a wetland scientist is on site, your, your attention goes to that area because it shows signs of staining. And where is that water coming from? Well, I should have coordinated better with, with Mr. Nollet. There's actually two sump pumps that drain and pump the cellar out to that location. So that's why that area is stained with water.
And this is the salad to the?
To the butter, to the, to the, to the.
The house you built for your son, right? The butter to the northwest.
The soup.
Yep.
So that's, so that's the source of the staining, which, okay, that, that makes sense now knowing that there's a sump pump that, that's why you're seeing the stained leaves and, and evidence of the puddling there. But when you look at the soils, they're, they're bright upland soils. It's not, it wouldn't meet the criteria of an isolated vegetative wetland that would be protected under your bylaw. And we, Megan and I have, we put a full report together with data sheets and the notice of intent. You'll see it in the wetland delineation section with photographs. And Megan confirmed that and we've reviewed that together in the field.
And I, I think, so I'm glad you guys looked at that area because I was questioning it by only walking through it one time.
And I see what you're, you're, and you wouldn't, when you see that, okay, well, what's the soils look like? And where's the water coming from? Because it almost is like, well, where's that water coming off the road? But then when Mr. Nollet pointed out the, the pipes, you know, under the, the undercut next to the driveway, okay, that's where the water's coming from.
And so that's what's kind of concerning to me because I think that maybe in the past, the house that was built there maybe impacted some wetlands that created that on to your lot, you know, when you subdivided that lot. So I just want to make sure that, you know, whatever happens with the ditch and the backyard, you know, any impacts that we're making sure we're really looking at taking care of, eliminating any impacts as much as possible.
And we're not look, it's a fairly flat accessway. All we're looking to do is a gravel driveway.
Oh, are you?
I'm done, yes.
So I believe that we're kind of all in mutual agreement that the Wetland Protection Act does not apply to this situation. It's not jurisdictional there.
It certainly appears, it certainly appears that way and.
And while the commission is empowered of a certain level of discretion, I do think that the MACC guidance is a useful barometer in determining how to exercise it. Moreover, since Dyton is an agricultural town with a farm history, I do have concerns that it could set a unhelpful precedent if we were to take action that begins to, you know, interpret farmer's ditches as streams. I do have concerns that that could lead to, you know, that could have unintended ramifications.
Okay, what we, we're rewriting the bylaws, we can certainly address that.
Add some definitions, more concise definitions, which I did, I did do some.
Right, and, and if we were to do that, and I know that at previous meetings, we've said that one of our stated goals is to try to bring a little bit more uniformity between some of the exemptions and the exercises of discretion under the WPA with the local bylaw. I do think that finding this to be non-jurisdictional might be, might be prudent.
Okay, so what?
I think Abel has a couple of ideas too, I don't know, but.
I have a couple of questions. This proposed barn, the proposed barn, is that, is that two levels? Did I understand?
Yes, so it'll be a foundation with a, with a walkout.
With a walkout? And the walkout is, appears to be somewhere about 25 feet, 25, 30 feet from the 50-foot buffer zone.
Probably something along the lines of that. Oh, let's see, it's, it's 69.3 feet away from the wetland, the, the barn.
That, that corner.
You have almost 20 feet till you get to the, to the 50-foot.
Okay, so that south corner is.
And, and before any work starts on the site, and I know we'll have, you know, strict conditions, but the limits would all be staked in the field. So, and I, and I don't know if you guys use conservation markers, but we'd be happy to put conservation markers at that limit too, so that there's no encouragement. That's what I, I thought.
So I was just concerned about the traffic with the walkout and where that traffic will wind up eventually.
It just to go around the, the building.
With a car?
No, no, just, just, just foot access, like a slider.
That's just a storage area that?
A storage up top and then a, a foundation with a, you know, the slider below.
Full, full foundation.
Where the, with, the way the topography works there, it lends to that, so.
Yeah. I read topography every day, so I understand.
Yeah, okay.
So is this going to have a septic system with it at some point?
The barn, no. If it would, then it would have to go through the Board of Health. And if it's in within 100 feet of your jurisdiction, then we come back to the commission. What's nice about this site is that you, as I said in the beginning, you have a 14-acre site. And we're proposing a modest, you know, we're not, we're not looking at multiple structures here and subdividing. It's, I think it's a fairly small project. And you, the rest of the site is being left undeveloped.
Is the, the test pits that were dug, are they, these test pits here that are dug, was that for a proposed septic system?
That wasn't as part of this, this was done previous. So the test pits that were done in that area, I, I can't just talk about the, what we.
Are there, are there flood pipes still in those test pits?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was made five years, 2002.
But the septic system is proposed in this corner. So if we have to, you know, the next step at some point will be the design of that septic system.
Oh, so you, so you do, you, you are planning on putting the septic system?
Yes, not within the jurisdiction of, not, or if you look on this plan here.
People over here on the left hand.
In this area.
Yeah, okay, I see that.
So maybe we could, you know, if we do approve the plan, it could be under the condition that there's no additional septic system for the barn. The other thing I was.
If they're out of the resource area.
Well, the barn isn't the resource area, but. See, the test pits, test pits are within the 200-foot riverfront.
And those weren't done as part of this project, as Mr. Nollet said, those were done previous and some, you know, planning purposes. We're not proposed, we're, first off, we're getting outside the jurisdiction of the, hold on one sec.
I'm looking at this, there's no riverfront on this one.
Yes, it's right here.
The purple line?
No, I'm talking about the other side of the sign. There's a riverfront over here because this is the bank.
This is the riverfront here.
Oh, right here.
Yeah.
Got it.
So those.
So those test pits are within the riverfront.
And those were done previous, those are associated with a current application. And I believe those at the time would have been an exempt minor activity, soil testing.
I, I also would kind of like elaborate on the, the barn and the, the house and the limit of clearing. So the limit of clearing for the house is shown as the orange dash line, correct?
The limit of the yard, the house is outside the buffer zone. The limit of the proposed yard is about 55.9 feet from the isolated vegetative wetland and it's got that orange dash line around it.
So is this existing?
No, none of these are existing.
Okay, so that, where's the disturbance here?
So you're saying the limit of disturbance is the orange dash line of 55 feet off of the water?
Yes, so we're nowhere close to the 25-foot no-touch zone.
That one gets wiped out.
And this gets wiped out.
And then the same thing with the barn, it's the orange dash line to the limit of work.
Yes, and that is outside the 50-foot buffer zone.
I think that the plan should also note the limit of clearing for those and limit of clearing for both of them, but then the cop cap, I would like it to call out as gravel.
Well, the limit of clearing, I mean, we're putting the straw wattle at the limit. I mean, I don't have a problem if you ask to put the, change the straw wattle to a silt sock and then just put a note on there, limit of clearing.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the, the intent, but that's not, that's not a problem to make that change of the plan.
Okay, and then gravel for, specify gravel on the plan for, for the driveway?
That's what we put, I think it's written, again, it's not within the jurisdiction of the commission, but it is proposed as a gravel driveway.
It's before us.
It's outside your jurisdiction.
But you told us you were going to do gravel, that's.
It's in the notice, right.
Okay.
Abel, did you have anything else?
No, it's pretty much it, thank you.
Is there?
So you understand Abel's concern is that the barn is really large. So is that going to be a proposed house in the future?
Okay, but we're also.
That's in the juris, our jurisdiction. That's in our jurisdiction.
No, a, a portion of it, yes.
In the riverfront too.
So that would have to.
There's nothing in the riverfront.
In the RIPS.
There's no proposed activities in the riverfront, it's only the buffer zone out of, of the IVW and the BVW.
Oh, sorry, yeah, good.
I mean, if we were to be, piggy, I guess we'd say, but for better, for worse word, you'd be allowed up to 10% of the riverfront area to disturb. And we'd be, and in accordance with your bylaw, we would be up allowable to work up to the 25. So we've avoided work, you know, basically in the 50-foot and we've avoided the 200-foot riverfront and fall.
What's, do we have a floor, a basement floor elevation?
No, I don't have one on this plan. We don't have architectural stuff yet. This is just, it's just, this is our first step, you know, is to come to the commission.
So we would, we would strip this and there'd be no filling at all or underneath the basement foundation?
It would be basically cut and then the, right, there might be some minor, I mean, obviously there's going to be some reworking around the foundation, but we're not looking to, we're looking to work with the land.
I'm just saying, you gotta just couple all the organic layer, you're not going to add to a crushed dome underneath in the event of.
I think they'll have to excavate the, the, the foundation, bring it back. I'm not, I'm not a foundation expert, but I think they'll probably have to put some sort of gravel underneath then the foundation.
So now if we were to propose a motion to approve with conditions such as specifying the 50-foot buffers, the no-build zone, or updating the plan to include replacing the straw wattles with a filter sock, with those.
And the ditch, the.
Yeah, propose a culvert under the driveway.
Cut the culvert, yeah, I mean, do you want a two-to-one culvert, like we would require for anything else?
But you're right, again, you're, you're, we're not.
If it's non-jurisdictional, can we take any action regarding that?
We can require the, a deeper detail on that.
You, you actually can't. That'd maybe be like going up to Maple Swamp Road where you're outside the, the buffer zone. We don't have, we don't have problems with putting a culvert in, but you, you can only work within your areas.
Okay, what size culvert are you planning?
That's right, that's right. That's fine, that's fine.
Do we want any?
We're not, they're going to have to come back anyway.
Yeah, they, you can't, you can't hold them to a culvert tonight.
Well, don't, if you're going to do some.
Yeah, but we can't really hold them to a culvert tonight, Jim, because we haven't done calculations.
But we're not.
Do you know the size of the ditch?
Can I just stop and talk?
Sure.
I just, yeah, so I think if the commission is taking the stance that it's not a jurisdictional stream under your bylaw, then it's out of your jurisdiction to request information on the culvert or specify those things. I think if you do want to take jurisdiction on it, then that's when you would request.
My, my thing is that they're willing to put in a culvert, but if they're willing to put in a culvert, give them time to calculate it. You know what I mean? If they can get away with a 12-foot culvert, I mean 12-inch, instead of like six feet, you know, give them a chance to calculate it and then we'll go from there.
Again, this is where I don't, don't, because now we could talk about like utilities on the road.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah.
We're gonna, we'll be happy to put in a 24-inch culvert. Again, Mr. Nollet created this ditch, so, and it's not something that.
I'm, I'm not convinced that, in my opinion, that it's jurisdictional.
I, I don't see it either.
I, I don't, I'm doubtful of the degree to which we can really regulate the activity of the culvert at all.
And, you know, I.
We can, we can recommend it.
I'm visualizing water being pumped out and through, but, but that, again, like you say, it's, it's, is it? And even the, the tape that I was listening to, it's, it's, it's really up to us to say, do we want to take jurisdiction?
DEP is leaving it to us based on our regulations.
Well, and I think it's important to, if you determine it's not jurisdictional, it does ultimately flow into that BVW which we talked about out there. And maybe it's in your jurisdiction to require some erosion controls within the buffer zone into that BVW to make sure nothing is going into that BVW.
Erosion control, eblewatering, because if you're doing, you know, site construction, it might be eblewatering.
We're not, again, it's just a gravel driveway. We're off into areas that are outside the scope of the notice of intent and outside the, the state regulations and the town of Dyton bylaw. As I said before, we're putting a culvert in, we're not looking to dirty the property. We'll use erosion controls. And as soon as we hit jurisdictional areas which of the, that are identified on the site, we'll put silt socks in, we'll change it to straw wattles and maintain. Star rock, correct, change, change from straw wattles.
Oh, and the other thing is we require in our posts, we like posts when we have placards. A lot of towns are doing that, so we started doing it.
That's what you had asked on.
Actually, what, what I like to do is I do a six-foot-high cedar post and put a birdhouse on it. And then I put the plaque on the birdhouse, now you have a little bit of extra.
Yeah, we have slats.
A good-looking plaque.
The plaque would go on the birdhouse.
Yeah, the bird, your plaque goes on the birdhouse.
Sounds like the birds.
Well, don't, yeah, don't poop in the wetlands.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion if there's no other. Is there, is there any questions for the audience? I want to forget that.
Yeah, we need, we actually got a couple of inquiries from neighbors on this, so I don't think anyone's here.
No, well, okay, is there a motion on the floor?
I'd like to propose a motion to approve the NOLI subject to two conditions.
All in favor?
Is there other catch basins on the street?
Any storm catch basins, basins on the street?
Yes.
Okay, so.
They just put them in two, two, three years ago.
Yeah, so the water from your site might drain to the road?
No.
No?
No, I'll take it to my backyard.
Okay.
Well, we just want some sort of inlet.
You have to alter the road, yes, but it doesn't, no.
Some sort of inlet protection in that, in that to work out with Mr. Berry.
Motion has been made and seconded. Get a vote on it now. All in favor? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you for working it through with us.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you to the MACC guidance as well.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, but we have an email. Provided me with an email that I haven't yet had a chance, I just wanted to write it earlier. Yep, I'll send it to you right now. And then, if you wanna read it now, then we can talk about it.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is a notice of intent from Alex Riberio for work at zero Tiger Lily Road, map two lots four and five. Work includes the construction of a single-family dwelling with driveway associated grading, septic system, well, and associated utilities.
Hi, Alex.
Hello. We need a guy.
Good evening, my name is Amanda Langer, I am here on behalf of JDE Civil representing Mr. Riberio. There's a notice of intent filed for zero Tiger Lily Road, I have the, Lisa, would you like these, the cards?
Yeah, please, nice meeting you. Thank you.
And you have the receipt for...
Yeah, we got it.
All right. Right, so, we are back here again today, we were here previously, um, back in June for an Anrad to have the wetland line delineated. Um, that was approved by the commission and ORAD was issued, that has since been recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and a copy of the recording is in your application packet, uh, that you have in front of you. What we are proposing is for a single-family dwelling, uh, for backdoor single-family dwelling, the church part of the lot, the driveway is going to come off and connect to the cul-de-sac of Tiger Lily Road. Um, there's significant amount of slope to this lot, um, so that requires, uh, significant amount of grading. One of the items tied into said grading would be the boulder slope, which, it's not a retaining wall, it's just, it's like riprap slope, except bigger stones. Um, it's, it's kept there primarily to stabilize, um, the groundwater. If you look, it's kinda hard to tell, but the slope is actually even stee- it's about a two to one slope, goes into a one to one slope in some spots on both these areas where it's tight, but what's existing now, it's actually even steeper than that, so we're improving that a little bit, and we're giving the neighbor, um, some protection, which he actually does not have now from the water that, uh, may run off from the development. Um, we have a proposed septic system here that is outside of the hundred foot buffer. The septic tank is also outside of the hundred foot buffer. We have, uh, proposed well back here, that well is out, uh, it's not that it's, it's well that you guys, but it is away from, um, the septic system. Um, we have proposed straw wattles, as I heard Lisa say earlier, you guys prefer filter sock, that's fine, we have to change that out. Um, the ones that are clearing does go towards the back, Alex has recreational vehicles, four wheeler, stuff like that. He's not proposing any grading or anything, he just wants to clear out the trees that are there to have access to that back area, you know, so he can enjoy that stuff with his kids back there. It's, um, there's a lot of ledge and boulders out on the site, those ledge and boulders will be repurposed into that, uh, boulder slope that we have proposed there. We do have, um, silt sacks proposed for the catch basins that are in the, the vicinity of the proposed project, and we have a deep watering basin for construction.
Okay, uh, house, septic...
Yes, the septic's outside of the jurisdiction.
Um, just to the right of the cul-de-sac?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the, the, you're making a, a, a drive or a pathway to the back?
Pathway.
Just a path.
Just a pathway.
Ten feet wide.
How long?
Ten feet wide, okay. And is that, is that halfway, is that, uh, in the hundred foot buffer zone anywhere?
Yes, it is, yes.
Okay, I...
Oh, thank you very much, so the house is right here.
Um, how tall is your retaining wall?
The retaining wall.
Okay, the boulder wall?
The boulder wall? Uh, the top elevation is one oh nine, the bottom elevation is one oh one.
Uh, we're gonna need feedback because the building department requires a permit for anything over four feet.
But it's not a wall, it's just a slope, it's the same thing as a riprap slope, do they require building...
Yeah, anything over four feet, even if it's loose.
So if we didn't put any sort of stabilization down and we just graded it out, as is the one to one or a two to one, and didn't put any protection down, would they require...
No.
Okay, so we can remove the stone then?
Oh...
We're putting that there as, as safety, and...
Okay, if you need it, is what I'm telling you, is they require a common permit.
We just did it as a common courtesy. We didn't, you know, we did it there for stabilization and stuff.
We, we have no authority over what the building department does in this order.
Right.
And actually, when I tried to talk to him about it yesterday, he said that he had just received it, so, um...
Which I did send it out on the thirtieth of July, so, and I actually think I have a read receipt from that, too.
Where's your access path going to, nowhere?
It's going out to the backyard.
It just, there's a, yeah, there's a huge ledge area back there, so...
What kinda, what kind of materials the path can be?
I'm just checking where it is, what's there with it.
Nothing. Just gonna take the trees down and remove the stumps, and that's it.
Okay, so you'll still have a canopy going over it and, um...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not looking to clear the woods, I'm just looking to get to the back of the lot, couple of kids.
Yeah, he has small children, so he wants to be able to go down there, have a path, you know, walk with them, have their own trail.
Okay, so this is fourteen foot house, everything, everything's out of the hundred foot, oh, wait, the house is...
No, the house is...
House is outside of the fifty.
The house, the house is outside of the fifty.
Septic, it has to be outside of a hundred.
Which it is.
And you're... If it snows, you're gonna be able to go sledding.
Yes. He's got kids, so...
Well, there used to be, a toboggan run up there anyway.
I can, I can believe it.
Yeah, no, uh...
The natural topography of that site is actually steeper than what we are proposing.
Yes.
So we've, we're proposing to feather it out a little bit more.
And so just to make sure I'm interpreting this correctly, is this the, um, like the boulder wall and riprap, like, or do whatever you're...
Yes.
So that will kind of contain the area that the yard expands to, just to make sure that what's removed, gotcha?
Yeah. Two, two is connecting to the ledge, too, it's just, it's dead ending at the ledge, so...
Gotcha, I, I was just making sure that the, uh, the yard wouldn't be encroaching into the twenty five foot, that was my question, but it sounds like the boulder wall is gonna kind of ensconce that outer perimeter.
Yeah, and again, there's, there's a lot of ledge and a lot of boulders on site, so he's gonna be repurposing those and relocating them for that.
Well, that, that seems like a good way to, uh, to use them.
It makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as far as, um, as far as the building department goes, if they require us to get a structural engineer plan for a boulder slope, then that's something we'll address with them, happily.
I just want to also break your attention now, even if it's a boulder slope, it's still a structural change and a fifty foot no build. So we never allow a wall, retaining wall, or anything like that.
It's, it's not a wall by any means, it's literally grading with boulders placed on top of it. It's not retaining any sort of soil, it's not there to keep back any of the grading.
It's really gonna help the building.
It's just rocks on top of...
Purpose, just, I mean, we're just trying to figure out what the purpose is.
The purpose is for when the groundwater runs off, to help control it, so that it doesn't just rush off.
Yeah, I think to use the rocks up there.
Or like a smaller version of like a seawall at the beach?
Yes, exactly.
Hundred percent, use it to, use it to...
It does have a purpose, you know? So I'm just a little concerned about you not having any yard.
Me and you both, and you guys said no.
He is too, but...
What is that?
I said me and you both, and what, you guys said no, can't get into it.
He will, he's gonna walk down it.
I mean, he'd like to have a yard, but...
Oh, he's, he's, he's gonna put his walker path in, and it's gonna give him a little something, so...
Now, the, the, you had said that we are close to the fifty foot no build, but we will make sure that we have the foundation staked out appropriately prior to construction and pouring it.
Yeah, so this is gonna be kinda like, like, the seawalls at the beach, like, this is basically just kind of...
Yeah, I, I, no, I, 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 I'm just gonna drop the rocks and, and, and hold the soil down, please?
Correct, yep.
And then...
That keeps it from like eroding.
And throw rail, IV, and, and then grow over.
Right, I mean, as it stands now, there's some areas where it's not even like a one to one, I don't know if you can, if you can tell, but...
The ledge just drops off.
Oh, like right here, it's just so tight, you know, it's even worse, it's hard to tell under this, but it's even worse right here, so we're actually feathering it out a little bit more.
So it's just a, a slope now, or...
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah, yeah.
It's kind of a mess, Jim, it was the end of the road, and that's where the contractors dumped everything, when they were building before.
Slope, you're gonna walk on the basement?
No, I mean, that's basically what it is, correct? That's all.
Yeah.
We have, um, I think, these guys have a couple of questions, maybe?
Sure.
This is gonna walk out basement?
Yes, yep, it's gonna walk right out onto that ledge.
Twelve by twenty-four patio?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Is this a twelve by twenty-four patio?
It's a, so it's a deck off the back, yep, it's gonna be a deck and the...
Dead on the up, the upper level?
Yeah, and then in the front, there's a proposed farmer's porch that actually wraps around to that back deck.
Okay, uh...
Okay, I see that made.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that looks nice.
So the deck's gonna be, what, about eight feet off the ground?
Probably.
I'm just picturing, like mine.
Yeah, yeah.
These, these rocks in the path...
Yep.
Are they at an elevation where you can just build a path right over the top of them?
I'm most likely going to, to be taking some of that ledge out.
Take, take a little bit out?
That way I don't have to build up, I'd rather remove it or...
Oh, so you're talking about maybe blasting in those?
We won't be blasting, it's dead ledge, it's just a common rock here.
So you wanna bring machinery in there?
Yeah.
I mean, he's gonna have to to clear the trees, right?
Yeah.
Is there a, is it sticking up a lot, are these protruding out of the ground a lot, these?
No, 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 you got like, what's the elevation, can you see?
I can't see.
Up at the top, my head, I think it's like four feet of it, is that, yeah, it's nothing, nothing traction, you're new, you're new to the board.
Yeah.
I own, I operate an excavation company, we do this often, this is, but I'm looking at the ledge, it's a simple road, we're not going to mess it up.
I got, I got sixty-six pieces.
Oh, okay, I'm the same boat, all right.
There you go.
So, yeah, no, the ledge is, it's dead ledge, too, so you bring a s- uh, small SP one hundred in there, they'll pull it right out, no problem.
Can everyone make sure they sign in if they haven't, there's a clipboard, I think, right over there.
So you understand the, the riprap slope when everyone's doing that?
Any, you guys have any more questions?
Um, yeah, I just, I have a question, like, where do you guys think we should have them put the no disturb posts? Because now we have a path going to the back.
I mean, the twenty-five foot makes the most sense.
The, um...
That's, that's really close, though, we usually, I mean...
So you said that this is something that you guys have, like, recently started doing?
Yeah, the path.
Okay, so, in Easton, they do have the conservation posts, a lot of places do. Um, majority of the time, the rule of thumb with them is it's either the area of the existing backyard, you know, the limit of the trees, or it would be the twenty-five foot no touch, or whatever, I believe Easton has a fifty foot no touch. Um, so they would do it within...
Yeah, it's pretty strict.
They're very strict, and that sort of helps to really define like the, hey, look, this is the twenty-five foot, don't touch it, so...
But I mean, I just wanted to make sure that, like, you know, if you put it at twenty-five foot, that that doesn't mean in the fifty foot or the hundred foot, you're even gonna be cutting vegetation regularly on that one, so you're...
I'll have the, I'll have the layout pretty much, with the twenty-five foot, then I can just do, I can just measure off those to be able to tie it in, bro.
Yeah, I mean, just because any work, including cutting or clearing in the one hundred foot part of the, that's why you have...
Yes, you need an RDA or an NOI, yep.
Is this paved path?
No, he's aware of that.
No, it's not.
It's just a gravel, gravel path.
It's not, are you gonna surface the path?
No.
No.
No, I'm just gonna cut, cut and stomp.
It's pretty much the same path I took out when I went out to do the, uh, purchase. Yeah, we walk, we walk back. Yes, we walk, right, you're...
You're leading Mr. Cassada, I mean...
Yeah, I just need, I just wanna clear actually, take a small car or a bicycle out there.
Yeah.
To be honest, it's like...
Going to access the, the, the land, I would have been like, oh, it's a structure.
So you have a deep watering basin, the only thing, I'm just, like I said, you're, it's, I mean, obviously, you put those stones in for sure, so... I would like with those provisions input, and as any, that I would just want to be able to bond by the plan based on the...
Yeah, I mean, so, we need to bring this in front of the building inspector anyways, to get the building permit, so he will have his essential bite at the apple.
Right.
Um, at that, at that point, you know, if he feels as though this needs to be done a different way...
Yeah.
We'll address that, and we'll be happy to come back to you guys with a revision.
Yeah, so if we, if we were to move forward with an approval tonight, and then the building department were to require some kind of material change, the alternative, it would just have to come back anyway.
That would be a modification, yeah.
Yeah, it would be a modification, yep.
Um, and then I just think, you know, work with Tom Barry as far as the access way, but we're gonna pay him, but...
I, I think we should let him put this in, 'cause that's gonna help to protect the wetlands.
Yeah, I mean...
I don't know.
Help protect the wetlands.
Did you hear what he said?
Nope.
I couldn't hear it, either.
Well, I, I'm thinking that we should allow them to do this, because that's gonna help protect the wetlands.
It's, yeah.
You know what I mean? Th- this is all, um, you know, that's protection, mind one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the limit of clearing would be, uh, um, you have it...
Your orange line?
The orange line, yeah, and there's a green line for the proposed tree line, yep. Much to what Jack was saying, you know, a lot of contractors have been using this as a dump site, essentially, and there's, it's got a lot of wetlands on it, a ton. So this is gonna be a really good way to keep that from happening.
Are we set with questions, Lisa?
Oh, yeah, um, he's talking about the stormwater of the house, the roof leaders, drains.
The roof, roof leaders, are you gonna put them in some sort of system, or are you gonna just let it drain off on the ground?
We were just gonna let it drain off, yeah, there really isn't space to put in any sort of system. I mean, I'm sure Alex will probably end up, you know, making a rain barrel or something like that.
I'm gonna guide the water someplace that I can utilize it, or it comes up the property, doesn't grow anything.
Okay, uh, anybody else have questions here?
No.
Any questions from the audience? Okay, shall we, uh, bring it to a vote, is there a motion?
I'd like to propose a motion to approve the NOLI for zero Tiger Lily Road with conditions.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, and I have twenty-one days to issue that, but hopefully it doesn't take me that long, you guys.
Okay, yeah, we still have to file with, um, Board of Health as well, too, so we're gonna take care of that next week.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you for your patience.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance from...
Uh, Jim, should we go back to, uh, where we gotta go back to?
Oh, the where, the one we continued earlier?
Uh, New Leaf, uh, Energy?
Um...
Did he show up?
Was that Dean Smith?
Yeah.
Uh, motion to revisit the Anrad application for New Leaf Energy?
Sorry.
Did you wanna have a vote on it?
Uh, yes, so it's, uh...
Aye.
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 So, I'm just here in case you have questions, um, since we last appeared, our consultant had submitted the vernal pool areas for certification to, to the state, so that's in process now, I'm hoping that, that that's enough to satisfy... So that's in process now, I'm hoping that, that that's enough to satisfy the commission, and that, that you're able to take a vote on our NRAD this evening.
Okay, that, uh, we are, are you involved in this one too?
No, that, this was beta, was the.
A beta.
Beta, okay, alright, beta.
They provided a report, and we accepted everything that, that they discussed with our.
Okay, so the vernal pool was being certified?
It's already been submitted to the state, yes.
Yeah, we have all the documentation that we required, they, they were able to get that to us, um, so I think they're ready to get an ORAD issued to them finally.
Okay, um, so we need, we're looking for a, a motion to accept the NRAD?
So moved.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Um, okay, so, a request for a certificate of compliance from BWC Greenbrook LLC at, uh, nine oh three Tremont Street and six twenty-four Middle Street, file number seventeen four thirty-two, uh, Weston Sampson has been contacted, provide us with their peer review services.
Yeah, so that one, um, needs to be continued, because we're waiting on, um, they're working out the ethics, um, disclosure.
Get conflict of interest forms, just filling all of those out and getting them approved.
Appearance of conflict of interest.
Okay, appearance of, okay, so, uh, is there a motion to continue?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nine nine, uh, nine nineteen. Okay, um, next on the agenda, I'd like to move the, uh, the draft of the, of the commission bylaws to later this evening. Is there a motion to?
Table it.
Table it.
Motion to table it.
Oh, okay, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service, farmland of local importance. Lisa, I know we've been, we've had many notices from this committee, they're looking for permission to do the valuable farmland in town.
Yeah, so what it is, is it, it just designates certain soil classes, um, you guys have that all in your packet, all the information, if you wanna take a few minutes to look at it.
Um, and, and so, okay, by approving their.
NRCS.
Uh, by approving NRCS's request, they were just, come in and look at the valuable farmland as it exists.
Actually, if you don't have it in your packet, it's because I did print it in.
I know, I had read it online, but I will take a copy.
I know, I read it two or three times. So there's a bunch of municipalities in the state that have done this, um, here is a map of the municipalities that have done that.
Uh, was it like we need to read it for the record, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, how about we, if we just, um, submit the, the photocopy into the record, rather than reading it all?
Sounds good.
And I'm keeping it in a packet, as suggested, we're gonna keep a packet from the meeting, so we have that, this on file.
Okay, and, and the idea of this, uh, is for a municipality to designate a soil as farm, or farmland as locally important. It, it doesn't, um, have any value on, on what a farmer can do or can't do, it has nothing to do with the, the value of the land. It's just a soil designation by the, uh.
NRCS.
Natural Resource of Massachusetts.
No, Natural Resource Conservation Services of the USDA.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept this, for them to do this research?
Uh, just for edification of the public, Mr. Chairman, so this designation, you can designate certain, uh, soil types as farmland of local importance. If you do so, um, it makes it potentially applicable for, uh, federal farmland preservation funding, which is a way to, uh, help shore up agriculture and, uh, and protect local farmland, just for the edification of the public.
Yeah, and there is no cost to the municipality, and, uh, it doesn't have anything to do with the valuation of the land?
Yep, doesn't impose, you know, deed restrictions or anything of that nature.
Okay, is there a motion to, uh, accept the re, the classification of soils within the community?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Lisa, I, they're just gonna forward that to.
Um, I'm gonna email Alan, what he'll do is he'll produce one of those that has a signature page for you.
Okay, he does have his email over here.
Yep.
Okay, and you have that, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Okay, uh, close out inactive fifty-three G accounts?
Yeah.
Yes, so what this would do is, um, we've got some fifty-three G accounts in the custody of the treasurer's office that hold funds for, uh, permitting. And there are some, uh, projects that have been since closed out, yet they have small lingering balances, you know, fifty to a hundred dollars. And, um, in accordance with, uh, fifty-three G, we're required to return those funds to the applicant, uh, after completion of the project. And, um, I believe Lisa's got a list of some of the inactive ones that, um, that are all set.
Okay.
And so what we would like to do is review those tonight, if they are in fact closed out, to vote to send a letter to the treasurer's office requesting that they close the fifty-three G accounts.
Review each one, or just as a group, those that are inactive?
Well, you should probably give each one, but, um, you can read it further, and I don't know what the, uh, uh, on that, so.
Yeah, it should be the debt of balances, let's see.
And, and it.
So zero tiger lily is still, still active, right?
No, that was for the ORAD.
Oh, that's just for the ORAD?
Yeah, we already issued it.
Um. It's for the project is when these are, so.
Yeah.
This is for a project before permitting body, so are they all set?
They're all set for their ORAD, yeah, that was why we asked.
Okay, so there's not gonna be any further peer review, pretend, okay, so the zero tiger lily road, which is a balance of six hundred thirty-nine dollars seventy-six cents. Uh, Briarwood Detention Basin, um, looks like perhaps that was opened and never had anything.
I need to look into that.
Yeah, that one has a balance of a thousand dollars, but there, there hasn't been any transactions, just the initial.
Okay, then might not have come for, uh, stiff components yet.
Okay, gotcha.
I wouldn't go by the highlighted ones.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm worried he just highlighted them.
Oh, gotcha, okay, so this, what I think might be easier then, is if we could review, um.
You wanna, more.
It might be better, rather than go through these, the majority of these predate me.
Yeah, some of them predate me.
So it might be better if we were instead to vote to authorize the agent to review the filings, and then, once she's confirmed that they are settled and they're closed out, to notify the treasurer's office, and then I will close those accounts. That, that, that might be easier, rather than go through them line by line, or we can just do our due diligence offline.
Do you wanna make a motion, or as such?
So moved.
Is there a second?
The south side anyway?
I second.
Okay, actually, you have not been confirmed yet by.
I'll second it.
I'll let you go until this. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ed, I'm going to, uh, abstain from voting on that one, just because I'm also town treasurer, so, I don't think there's a conflict, but.
Yes, do you want to read that?
I have. I have a bigger one than that one.
Sure.
Okay, uh, agents, okay, um.
Okay.
Sometimes we have, um, the peer review services and money comes in, and if we wait for another meeting to occur, uh, work does not occur for a month or, or even later with the applicant. So, uh, what we have to do is to authorize our agent, Lisa, to be the signator of, of the peer review process, and to sign off and start the services needed.
Just to confirm my understanding, we could have a, we could receive a scope from Weston and Sampson for a project tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
For an applicant who has every intention of funding it, and wants to move forward as quickly as possible, but they're handcuffed to waiting all the way until our next meeting, so that we can formally.
Exactly what it is.
So this vote would empower Lisa to, uh, to accept that on behalf of the commission, that way we can keep the ball rolling, uh.
Well, I just wanna clarify, 'cause I put on the agenda for follow-on peer review, so you're saying even for an initial, you would want to allow me to, or just for something where they've already started reviewing the project and they need to do more work?
That, that might be easier, because in, in theory, the, the, uh, commission could always decline to send something to peer review in the first place, if there were circumstances that warranted it.
Right.
But once we know it's already in peer review, it might make more sense if we structure the motion so that it's just any follow-up scope.
Yeah, I think so, I would like, I think that would make more sense, to make sure we're on the same page from the beginning with the project, once you've, you know, we've started reviewing it, when the hearing's open.
Does anybody have any feedback on that?
Okay, uh, is there a motion to authorize the agent to be a signator?
I'd like to propose a motion to allow the conservation agent to accept, um, peer review scopes and proposals on behalf of the commission for any filing which already has ongoing peer review.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, we had talked about a new laptop purchase and setup with the commission. At one of our last meetings, Lisa and I were at, we talked about getting a, an in-house computer and, um, keyboard for Maureen to do the work.
You mean a laptop?
But, do we have that?
No, um, shh, the last ti- time she did these minutes, she did them from the desktop, and, um, as of last week, she said she would just continue doing it that way. But, um, if you guys wanted to entertain the motion for the laptop, it's up to you guys. What, um, was discussed with the interim town administrator was, they would pay for the software and the setup if we would buy the laptop. So I think it would be somewhere around three hundred, we don't.
Yeah, the laptop itself is short money, it's like one to three hundred bucks, and, um, the more expensive component to that is like all the network security, the encryption, connecting it to the system and all that. Uh, the town administrator did agree to pay for all of those charges out of the, uh, data processing budget, so we wouldn't be responsible for those. Even though if, um, you know, our office assistant is going to be doing the minutes from the office, I do think that it could potentially be worth thinking about having a laptop that can be kept in the conservation office and signed out, if, um, you know, there are circumstances where Lisa was going to be doing things remotely, or, um, if she needed to do anything from home. I think having a segregated computer that is just for official work, so there's no co-main law of anything personal of hers.
That, that's very important, okay, so, uh, let's, uh, consider then, um, putting money out up to a certain amount. Now, the figure was three, three fifty, so if we say up to, let's say four hundred dollars.
Yeah.
To purchase a laptop, uh, not to exceed four hundred dollars, uh, for the conservation office.
Yep.
I'd like to propose a motion to approve the purchase of a laptop, not to exceed four hundred dollars.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, we have various bills, um, is there a motion to pay, um, bills received?
It looks like these have already been signed.
Yeah, uh, Lisa had me, had me do these, so, um, let us just take a motion to, to pay bills rece- um, received.
Uh, propose a motion to, uh, pay all vendor and payroll, uh, expenses in terms of our last meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, the commission updates to, uh, twenty-three seventy-one County Street.
Hello.
Okay, for the public, uh, this was an enforcement audit issued, uh, four one, uh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, the DEP visited the site, four twenty-three, uh. This has been going on now for, uh, over three years, getting, uh, work to be completed on the site for, uh, rehabilitation of the site.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Hey.
John De Souza, uh, North County Group, um, since the last meeting, um, we had a meeting over at Lisa's office, and, uh, I believe the commissioner was there, uh, to go over the plan and the plantings, uh, we have updated the plans to include some.
When did this plan come in?
It actually just came in.
You mean, like, today, right?
Yeah.
Uh, because I had something written down that it was gonna come in three weeks ago for us to review.
Yeah.
So this is our first viewing of it.
Yes, it is, um, it is.
I'm not happy with that.
I, I understand that, and, uh.
I, I was ready to ask the commission to start reinstating fines, because it hadn't come in, just to let you know where, where I stand and where the commission may. So, let's, 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 we won't, uh, attack that yet.
No, that's, that's fine, but we, we had, uh, the meeting at Lisa's office to go over the, uh, the plantings, uh, at that point, which, uh, we ended up going through the plantings, we added creeping, uh, junipis over to the riprap, uh, as, uh, requested. We also added on a hundred foot, uh, buffer zone from the wetland, so you can see how it goes through the house, uh, on there as well. We made a couple of little edits on the plan, uh, one of the edits was on the notes for the plantings. We, uh, eliminated August and September from the, uh, plant dates, be on there. We also added a construction, uh, sequence, uh, to the sheet on number two, and we updated the planting schedule in the legend to account for the creeping, uh, junipis on there. And this goes, uh, in relation to the onset that we had, that, uh, a few of the commissioners were there as well, and.
Just so the commissions are aware, I have not had a chance to look at these at all, it just came in today.
So, to, uh, further on that, the plans were emailed over, uh, earlier today, and, um, they were very minor edits, at the best. Uh, since, uh, we basically were asked to add creeping junipis, which we ended up doing, we ended up adding the, uh, construction sequence. We added, uh, to the legend, and we also amended the, uh, how to plant dates. We added to the legend, and we also amended the out-of-plant dates.
So we met, I think July seventeenth to go over the plans. Dave, Abel, Mr. D'Souza, myself, we met here and we went over them. And I'd be happy to review them, it's just I, I'm part-time and they came in today, so. To make sure that there are all the changes that we had discussed.
There's no way that can be done now?
Not right now.
No, I, I real, that's what, no.
Usually it ta, it honestly would take me an hour or so.
No, I, no, I, I, I'm just.
Yeah.
Saying that as a.
Yeah.
Not asking you to do it.
Okay.
But to.
Yeah, I don't know if you'd want me to do it at this time.
On his late arrival with information.
I appreciate the edits were made, if, if they were.
Oh, no, they were. They were, they were edited.
But I would like a little time to go over them.
So for purposes of tonight, is it something that we should take under advisement?
Right.
And, yeah, as a receipt of it?
Right.
And go from there?
Yeah, I, I think you were talking about starting in September.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be looking to start later on, hopefully around the middle of September anyway.
Okay.
Our next meeting is the nineteenth.
Oh, you got to move your meeting.
I doubt it.
No? Hey, I tried. You got to move it from Thursday though, because you're interrupting with Thursday night football now.
This Thursday night football? I thought that was Monday and Sunday.
Well, Mondays and Sundays as well, and now Thursdays.
Okay, so we're going to continue this to review the plans and.
Yeah.
We shall, okay, Lisa, what I want you to do though, as, as we, as you go over and you, then you'll be contacting.
Yeah.
Each of us with it, as we have hours, we'll read it over, and we can sort of give heads up if there is a problem with something, that it can be rectified at the next meeting.
Yeah, I can look at it next week.
Yeah, and then the other thing I would like to just ask the commission is if actually we can start just by removing some of the debris that's out there, instead of just letting that linger for longer?
What do you want to remove?
Some of the trash and whatnot that's already over the side, kind of just start the cleanup process a little bit.
Did you ever calculate the disturbance numbers?
I have that, but I, I can email that to you in the morning.
Yeah, that was one of the things.
Yeah.
Abel, do you have anything else that?
I'm sorry, so that.
Okay.
I think it might be a good idea.
You know, if you came in three weeks ago with this, we could have acted on it today and got you.
Yeah, I know, I, I had to go to Wisconsin. We're giving up for World War III right now.
Oh, great.
According to those guys.
Thanks for the good news.
It is.
I'm not going to make any comment on it, because.
What's the opinion of the other commissioners regarding taking out some of the debris?
Some of the, you know, removal of debris, I think, would, would be fine.
I, I'm just hesitant, because kind of need like to phase it, so like, where's the debris going to go? Where, where are you taking it up? How are you accessing it? All that stuff still?
Yeah, most of what I'm thinking right now is on the upper portion. We're not going to go down into the lower portion till obviously we receive the approval from the commission. But I just wondered on the upper portion, just to start removing some of the stuff and hauling it out of there.
So just the bank and it's.
So.
Yeah, exactly.
Should we schedule a site visit to kind of look at that area?
Well, you know, I, well, I don't know, I think we've done enough. He has to make a platform there, so the equipment, the next.
Is that, is that what it's for?
Well, it's to curtail some of the stuff that's going over the side, but also we will be starting on the uphill side, just to kind of get the platform ready, so when we get the final approval, then we can get going and get down where we need to go. But right now, it's basically just on the upper portion, just to start cutting it back and removing some of the stuff that's out of there.
That's fine.
Well, that's within easy reach.
I, I see that, I see that as fine.
So I, I would like a site visit when we have the final, when I, we agree that we have a final plan, I would like.
Sure.
At least to do a site visit. I don't know if anyone else wants to go, to just go over it with you in the field.
Yeah, we can schedule a visit, and we can go through everything and, and go through the construction sequence and everything.
Right.
But, okay, Lisa, so you'll be reviewing this plan. And we'll be sort of, we're in and out of the office all the time. We'll, and then if there's any problems, we can address you so that you can correct it on a final one, and then we can get it approved at the nineteenth meeting. But yes, let's, let's, let's go to a vote on this then, for the removal of trash on the upper portion.
Do we really need a vote?
Well.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I think so.
Yeah, it's very specific.
Because we have an enforcement order, and, and this here would, would solidify it, as not one of us saying it's okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose a motion to authorize the removal of filth from the upper bank of the earth.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you'll be hearing from Lisa on this plan.
Okay, excellent.
Just give me a week or so, okay? You are, you are kind of weak.
She has to go to Wisconsin.
No, I can't afford that kind of time.
She has to go to Wisconsin.
No, I'm going.
That's actually coming up.
It's someplace better than that.
Wait a minute, Army Reserve?
No, I actually go there for Fort McCoy.
What?
Fort McCoy, they have a big fort there. They do a lot of military training and everything, so.
But you're in a branch?
Yeah, for the fuelers, so we're getting the fuelers shipped out.
Okay.
And I got Fort McCoy in Wisconsin coming up, and then from there, I got to go down to Utah. You should, you should do get around.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. D'Souza.
I'm here on one of them, so.
Okay, zero Horton Street, map ten, lot fifty-three enforcement order. Oh, there we are.
Oh, sure, thank you, Mr. Bubington.
Did you want to address the commission at all? Because we continued it. Do you want, do you want to talk to Maggie?
You at the fair at Marsfield?
No.
Oh, and I was going to go just to see you. Glad I, I'm glad I see you today.
For the microphone, that'd be great. Thank you, yeah, cable picks up the microphone better when you're at the podium.
Hey, this is basically just an updated version of what you had, well, I guess maybe you never saw the first one.
Huh.
I believe so.
Right, Lisa?
Yeah.
So this is the, this is the plan for that property.
Okay, you know, I'm very thrilled, because I was down there with you and we walked the site and.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I don't have any questions on it, you know, because I was there. Yeah, quite a few, more than me, I think.
I've heard enough about it, but I feel like I've been there.
Feel like you've been there, right?
Did you see what he, what he removed from it?
Yes, he did. And the, the part of the, part of it was the gravel that's in the back, that you can see the green in the back, that can stay. Originally, that was going to come out, but that's a, that's pure gravel, so they're going to leave that in, and we're just going to level that out, smooth it out. Then anything in the red has to come out.
Okay, and then you're going to restore the stream?
Yes, yes. Because the culvert has to come out.
So is it, is it flowing right now?
Should be now.
It was, it was this afternoon when I went out there after the three inches of rain.
You got that much?
Uh, we got a lot.
Okay, so I had one and, one and a quarter at my house.
We got a lot of rain this afternoon. It was running down my driveway pretty heavy. So I would imagine right now that it's probably running. It hasn't been running up till now, so.
Okay, so what's the sequence on it? Oh, do you want to go down what the changes are from the original one? That's the.
I don't have the original, so.
Okay, but whatever Stephen told you, do you want to go through that or?
What they told me was what's on the paper, because I went there, sat with them. So that, we don't, we're going to leave the gravel in, we're going to take out all of the red. There's going to be a thirty-foot landing at the very top, all the way at the, at the Horton Street end. It's going to, that wasn't there originally that I asked to have that put in. It doesn't affect any of the, any of the land whatsoever, so that's, that's it. And the rest of it's pretty cut and dry.
What, I'm going to be doing the excavation there. So what we want to do is the landing, we're just going to put boulders going down, just to hold that bank, just so it doesn't.
So it doesn't keep running downhill.
Yeah, there's no wetlands over there, but we're going to just put boulders, just so it doesn't, he doesn't lose it.
Somebody unhooked the trailer, but. But I don't think there's any, you guys have seen it, I don't think there's any real questions. It was just, I had to get with, together with Xena to pay him anyways, because of, and when we.
John has some original photos, and he wanted to bring it back to as close as he could to the original photos. So that's basically what the plan is based on.
Mr. Chairman, are you going to be looking for a motion to accept the restoration plan?
I, I, just a moment, we all set over here with it?
Yeah, so just, I guess just the understanding that after the removal, that once we look at that area and see if anything, you know, if it's not already coming, because I know it's grown back a lot.
It's already grown back. I tried to get them to leave a pu, a portion of this in, but they said no, because of, because of the contaminated ground, they wanted it taken out, because it's all grown back in already.
Can you tell us again what the material is, that he did not do it?
It's ground-up asphalt.
He's buying the property and the person that he bought it from did the violation.
What's the contamination, harder collins or?
It, it's ground-up asphalt. Somebody was doing a parking lot in the road, and they just asked this guy if he wanted it, and they, he went down. It's fine for a regular driveway or something, but you can't.
Yeah.
Put it in, to a field and, to a wetland.
Can't do what he did.
Yeah. So what we're going to do is we're going to sort through it, get the tar out of there, and the good gravel, leave there. He, he pulled boulders out of the field and, like, he just destroyed the whole entire area. So we're going to try to get it back to the original, put the boulders back, put the ba, he, he wrecked the bank along the road, which is going to be a problem for the road, so we're going to take the rocks that were on that road originally and put them back where they should be. So we, basically, we're just going to put everything back.
Work with Tom to make sure that.
I already talked, I already spoke with Tom.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm happy with that. Are you going to, what are you going to use for erosion control?
Uh, we were going to use.
We just got silt sock, I think.
Yeah.
Says silt sock up here.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Good.
But Steve was saying that because there's so much, it's spread out so much, he didn't, he just took and dumped a pile, and so there's no like evenness to any of it. There might be a little out there, a little out there. So Steve said, when it's dry, when we get, you know, dry days, that's when we're going to go in there and work. He said, do a little section, put silt, the silt socks, after the section is done. He said, because you're not going to know what the end of it is, because like John said, all the grass is grown back in it. So he said, just have a skid of silt sock there, as you go, just keep track of it. And then it goes downhill, so we really could just do the outer side of it, if you guys are right with that.
Yeah, so I know this plant's growing up within the gravel and.
Some of it's all grown in.
I, I re-watched it yesterday.
Trying to do the asphalt. Yeah.
I just did that so we could see where the lines were, you know.
If you did nothing in fifty years, that would all be just.
Yeah.
Thrown back in and be done.
Wouldn't, it wouldn't take that long, probably.
Well, it'd be all grown in and all, everything would be disintegrated.
Yeah. What, what are you going to use to reclaim that? Some sort of a grading bucket or?
Oh, what do I have? I have a JCB skid steer with a power rake that goes into a bucket. So as we go along, I'm going to just power rake that, and I mean, you, I heard you had sixty-six pieces of equipment, so. So I got a.
It's a period of time, but.
Yeah, I got a whole bunch of equipment too, but, yeah, so I'm going to power rake that, collect all the junk, dump it in a dump truck, you know, and just.
That's a good idea, uh, the power rake's a good idea.
Yeah, so I don't know how else to get it out of there without making a shithouse mess. I don't want to excavate and then try to sort through stuff and have a screener down there, and you, you just make a mess.
Well, some always gets through the screener, nothing you can do.
Right.
So it's either the power rake or you go in grade bucket, just scare it out, you know.
You could do that too, but.
Either, either way.
I like, I like the power rake.
Me too.
Yeah.
And this is the better time here because of the amphibians, so.
Yeah.
Want to try to get it done now and not have to wait until the spring.
I think we're going to start this week coming up if it's not raining, is what I'd like to do.
Okay, all right, if we're all set, I'll.
Just let us know, like, when the ocean trolls, you're starting and, you know, you can stay on top of going out and doing inspections and stuff.
Lisa, we got to watch the clock, we got a lot more to do yet. Okay. Okay, is there a motion to accept the plan?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we make a motion to take eight eighty, Hart Street?
So moved.
Got a motion to take eighty out? Is there a second from anybody?
Uh, there was a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Déjà vu.
Déjà vu, all over again. Evening, eh, eh, John D'Souza, North County Group. So we have been retained by the Whitmores to help them with the mitigation plans for the wetland resource areas. I had requested a continuance from the last hearing, and at that time, we have flagged the wetland areas already. We are in the process of going out there this week coming up to survey. The wetland line was just a little larger than we originally anticipated, so we just kind of threw our survey schedule out of whack a little bit. So we're going to be surveying the wetland line, the other resource areas out there, and the amount of disturbance, and then we're going to put together a plan, and we'll be here in front of you next month with it.
As long as you're not in Utah.
As long as I'm not in Newtown, which I hope not to be.
When I was by there, they had cows, and it looked like, um, they were wallowing in, in mud as though they were, well, they were in wetlands, destroying what they were in. With that rain today, maybe the cows washed onto the river, I don't know.
Maybe.
So when were the cows brought in, because a few months ago they weren't there?
That I do not know as of yet, I will.
Silo too.
Okay, uh, if I go by there and see that again, I'm gonna be calling the animal control officer about, uh, abuse to animals. So that you can, you can let them know, and I'm gonna be going by there shortly, because, uh, you don't put cows in that kinda condition.
Okay, I, I will let them know.
What kind of condition, excuse me, what kind of condition?
They were in six to eight inches of mud.
That's because we had just gotten a range blown, usually it's.
I don't belong there, they were in wetlands.
It's just like all the water that comes down from the hill because of the rain.
Well, then they gotta get moved up on the hill.
I just wanted to remind the commission that we had issued a notice of violation last year or the year before, um, to these folks. No, it wasn't the year before, it was last year, okay, twenty-three, um, I can pull it up here anyway. Uh, and then since then, we've, we've had division and enforcement order for the, this is for the boats. Um, the fill in the boats and yards, so this is April twenty-four, so that was the new use. And now there's cattle and a silo in this area. But did you realize that the wetlands were flagged last year by crime engineering or law?
I, I heard that there was some flagging out there, but when I had gone out there to do the flagging, I, I didn't see the remnants of it, so.
Yeah, so, uh.
So I, I basically looked at it as though it was a brand-new, uh, the site on our end.
Yeah, so you've got all Whitman soil.
Yeah, yeah, it's all Whitman, uh, uh, and through that whole area. There's some, uh, also, uh, ridgeby, but that's way out in the back, um, and where the houses obviously is where the, uh, the perk is for the soil, but there is a, uh, a good chunk of, uh, the soil in the middle for that, that would be classified under hydro, uh, the soil conditions.
Yeah, the original notice of violation was issued February first, twenty-three, um, and that was, um, cutting and clearing next to the house, just so you know, that they wanted to put in the general vicinity of where the cows are now, they wanted to put the cows there, and then we stopped them and said get the wetland delineation. After that, um, the cutting and clearing stopped, and they let it grow in, um, some, and then we noticed the fill in the backyard, and then the boats, and that's why we issued the enforcement order.
Okay.
Uh, so the enforcement order was issued, um, five thirty, twenty-four, requesting a restoration plan by eight thirty, eight thirty, twenty-four.
Okay.
Um, but then in the meantime, is when the cows were brought in and the silo was put in, so that's a separate offense.
Okay, so, yeah, uh, we're gonna be locating all that this week coming up, out there in the field, so, uh, you know, it'll all end up being on the plan and, and then, uh, we'll do what we need to do to mitigate it.
Okay, so we'll continue while it's, it's, uh, we'll expect something by.
Yeah, I mean.
Seven nineteen.
Uh, nine nineteen.
Nine nineteen.
And at that hearing, basically, is that you're gonna see the plan, and you're gonna see what has transpired, and then we can, we can go to the next step.
Okay.
But in the meantime, I mean, you know, so the new use of the cows in the wetland is not accepted, they didn't get a permit to do that with the silo, so it really needs to be removed.
Okay, yeah, so we'll locate it, see where they are on hand, uh, see, uh, the extent of it, and then go from there, and then.
Yeah.
If, if they need to file an after the fact for, uh, something, if it meets, uh, the twenty-five foot, uh, no touch or whatever, then they'll end up going that route as well. But, uh, up until we get into the plan and see exactly where everything is, it'll, it'll just make life a lot easier for everybody.
Sounds like the flagging is gonna drive the future.
Absolutely, yeah, the whole thing is over the flagging, so once that's a location on the plan, then we can go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Fourteen twenty, Williams Street?
Oh, just, point of order, Mr. Chairman, I just want, uh, I know we've got quite a bit left on the agenda. I'd just like to confirm with Gable what our hard stop is, uh, Dalton, do we have a hard stop time tonight?
Good night.
Thank you.
Uh, did you mean ten?
Ten. Did I hear ten?
Okay, well, maybe we can go quickly now, because we've only got, uh, yeah, if we. Okay, fourteen twenty, Williams Street, uh, new violation, discovered this property, uh, Clearway Solar. Uh, well, no, that's when conducted Clearway Solar, agent called owner, and, uh, and a plan should be final and submitted by the beginning of September. Okay, Lisa, I'm, I'm moving on, Lisa.
Yeah, go for it, sorry.
Okay, uh, ten thirty-three Oak Street, unpermitted and unauthorized by the commission. Lodge garage observed within, uh, regulated buffer zone, um. Okay.
We received a restoration plan on that.
That's Evan Watson and the, and the conservation agent reviewed draft plan and re, and revisions on eight seven, could you tell us?
He ended up doing it, um, he had to cancel, that was when I had already done the agenda, but, um, he and I are gonna schedule a site visit to bring the plan in the field.
Okay.
For the owner, and we're just trying to still coordinate it, so I'm hoping it can happen next week, he couldn't do it this week.
Okay. Thirteen thirty-four Tremont.
Um, no update on that, we have to wait till March, it can actually come off the agenda until the fall, but if I take it off, I just don't wanna forget about it.
Well, what's gonna happen is next week, next month is the fall.
I'm sorry, not the fall, I meant the spring, for the vernal pool season.
Okay. Uh, twenty-four seventy Pleasant Street.
I got an update from Mr. Bott, uh, he, as you know, we did the site visit with him. He reached out to Outback, he's waiting for Outback to give him a proposal, so I offered a site visit with Outback to kinda go over our, our discussion of what we wanted exactly, so they can provide him with a proposal.
Okay.
He's been cooperative the whole time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Seven ten Center.
Seven ten Center, I have not heard back from him, I left him two messages, so I need to keep following up, maybe I need to write him another letter. Do you wanna stop by?
Well, if I can catch him, yeah, I'll stop and talk to him.
Give him my phone number, my work.
I'm surprised, because he's using, he was, he was in tune with what was going on.
Maybe he has something else going on that's more important.
Um, ten seventy Smith Street.
Ten seventy Smith Street, I have an update from the owners, they, they got a delineation, um, they do have wetlands BBW on both sides of their property, and they are in the buffer zone. I don't think they're in the wetland with the clearing, but they're in the buffer zone, uh, with the clearing, and they're gonna propose some new work. They're still going over what they need to, what they wanna do for work on that property, um. The wetlands were, appear to be much more extensive when they built the house, so there was also a catch basin in the front yard, it's very interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in any case, they did email me that update prior to the meeting, so that's great that they're moving forward with the wetland scientist, hopefully they get a survey of that, and they provide us with a plan.
Okay, um, Sandwich Lane?
Uh, yeah, I did receive an email, actually, I got a visit from the owner. She said they, they had been, um, previously trimming all those years until recently her, um, property manager person, um, either left, something happened, I think he moved, but, um, she said she wouldn't do that in the future unless she contacted us.
Is this off of Winthrop Street?
No, this is down at Hunter's Hill.
Where?
Hunter's Hill.
Oh, Hunter's, okay.
So it's the lot at the end, and how it was found out was I was, you know, doing the site inspections with Dave and Lee, and ironically, they had just cleared their lot too, um. They are thinking about doing a house, they haven't decided yet. Basically, this is Mr. Johnson, he was given the lot when the Morandists were doing the construction of Hunter's Hill. He was given the lot, and, um, he was under the impression that, you know, he could do whatever he wanted with it, but of course you have to go through the permitting, so. We had a nice discussion, me and his wife Nancy.
Uh, who was this?
I spoke with the lawyer as well, Nancy Johnson.
Okay, this was the fellow that was here, Lynn Johnson, at one time?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so, we might be seeing a filing on that lot coming up, and if we do, and even if we don't, we're gonna require the twenty-five foot no disturb to be left, but, um.
Okay.
Yeah, I told her the regulation, regulations have changed over the years, so.
Okay, uh, um, we wanna do the reg, uh, bylaws, changes, or go over them.
Yeah.
And, uh, uh, we're gonna do it quickly so that we can get to our executive session.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, I, on the first page, I mean, I, I assume everyone's had the opportunity to read through these changes, uh, once or more.
Um, I, I haven't fully read through all of these, because I was at Amherst all week, and I didn't have access to email, I've read through some of them, um.
Okay. There, on the first page, the fourth line from the bottom, or fifth line from the bottom, all filings, I just found, just a mistyping, ALL filings. Lisa, you got my original copy that I gave you with, with the changes I made. Was, was there anything else that, that we needed to put in here that would, um? Jack, you had the opportunity to go through them all?
Yeah, I read most of them, then, you know.
Okay, um, on the NOI fees, it's in there twice, and I think, um, one was for residential and one was for industrial, but slash commercial, Lisa?
Yeah, so what do you guys think, do you wanna, uh, uh, request different fees for residential versus commercial? Or do you wanna just have a flat one?
We could revise this from time to time in the future.
Yeah.
For now, I think maybe it would be simpler to have one fee.
Okay.
Um, I am opposed to an RDA fee. Um, I think we have a hard enough time getting people to file with us prior to construction in the first place, I think having to pay seventy-five dollars is kinda discouraging people from, uh, doing some, some initial investigation about their project. Um, a couple of other quick edits, and, uh, just so you know as well, the, uh, the, where the select, we're willing to delay closing the warrant, so that we'd have time to revisit this again if we don't have a final vote on this tonight. They were, they were willing to, uh, delay the closing of the warrant until after our September meeting.
Oh, yeah, um, no, they postponed, didn't they postpone their meeting, their deadline to, it is after, I mean, next.
Yeah, I, that was my request.
Okay, oh, great.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
A few things that I noticed, um, in the section for two jurisdictions, on the second page, third paragraph down, where it discusses the, um, fifty-three G funding, where it says the commission shall require the payment of the consultant fee prior to the initiation of consulting services. Pay, failure by the applicant to pay the consultant fee specified by the commission within ten business days, request for payment or refusal for payment, should the commission deny the application based on lack of sufficient information to evaluate private feeds applicable performance standards. Um, we might wanna include failure by the applicant to pay the consultant fee specified by the commission or its duly authorized agent, now that we've authorized Lisa to accept those.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Wait, she'll point to it on the.
Yeah, on this line right here.
Oh.
Which is fail, failure by the applicant to pay the consultant fee specified by the commission. Where now also, we just empowered Lisa to accept.
But, but she would be the commission, so I don't know if you, okay. Yes?
No, I'm not the commission.
Yeah, so the commission or its duly authorized.
Failure by the applicant to pay the consultant fees specified by the commission.
Or its agent.
Because now we've approved Lisa to accept those proposals prior.
Good catch.
Or agent.
I put, uh, it's duly authorized agent, because in theory, the commission could decide to revoke that authority at some point someday in the future. Whereas if you just made it agent, then it's in there forever, um. Another, um, another thing that raised questions to me was the addition, the red, the red paragraph on that same page. There says unless the commission decides in a public meeting that other action is necessary. Um, fifty-three G lays out pretty specific guidelines, so it might be worth memorializing that that action is also allowable under master general law, so it can't just be, because, you know, we're superseded if we decide that other action is necessary. That has to be action that we can legally take with that money. Um, so I think that maybe cleaning up that, that sentence a little bit.
Okay, do you like the next sentence?
What's that?
Do you like the next sentence?
How did, how did you look at it?
Any applicant aggrieved, aggrieved by the imposition of our size of the consultant fee or any act related there too may be regulatory provisions.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
I don't know if I like that one.
I, I don't like that, to be honest.
Okay, Easton has it, and I don't know if I like it, I was just putting it in there to see if you guys would wanna go that way. But I think that opens us, us up to too many appeals and.
Right.
Some lawyers thought they could make money on.
Right, it's, it's, I agree, I mean.
Yeah, okay, I'll take it out, right, Jim?
You know, uh, well, what happens is if they don't pay in ten days, and then, and all of a sudden, they agree it in twelve days, uh, because.
Right, because, I mean, we have, if they, if they really have a good reason why they shouldn't have to go to peer review, we always have the ability to not send them, right? We don't have to require a peer review, but there'd have to be a really good compelling reason for that. And I don't like the consultant fee, and I don't wanna pay it, it's not a good compelling reason.
Oh, yeah, and I'm sure we'll get that.
Right, um, on the next page, where it's coordination with other boards. Um, any person filing a permit application with the commission shall provide a copy at the same time by cert, certified mail or hand-delivered to the select board, planning board, board of health, building inspector, DPW superintendent, and stormwater committee. Uh, it's actually, it's weird, it's a highway superintendent is, is Tom's title, we don't actually have a DPW.
Okay.
And then the other one is that I think we should strike stormwater committee. The, the Dyton stormwater regulations were last updated in two thousand nine, and they explicitly labeled the administrative authority of the stormwater regulations as the conservation commission in two conditions, which is all residential development and any commercial industrial development in which a, uh, wetland filing takes place. So to me, I think that we've, in the past, have kinda muddied the waters where the stormwater committee is taking on authorities, that really doesn't have.
And this was, this was requested by the chair of the stormwater committee, but it's completely, it's completely up to you guys.
I think that's something that we could, we could provide to them, but really, they, there's, they don't have any authority to administer stormwater regulations on anything which has a conservation filing. And I don't want to create confusion where applicants think that they need approval from two boards.
Okay, now, you, there was something that you said, okay, so you wanna rub that off?
If you ask, strike that.
And now, uh.
Does everybody else agree we should strike it?
Tom, and, uh, this, the building inspector and.
Tom's a, uh, highway superintendent.
Highway superintendent.
I fixed it, yeah.
Okay, highway superintendent and highway superintendent.
I mean, I'm not opposed at all if we provide a copy to the stormwater committee, but, um, I think if we put it in the bylaw, it. I mean, I'm not opposed at all. We provide a copy to the stormwater committee, but um I think if we put it in the bylaw, it kinda implies to an applicant, I understand if I was an applicant, that kind of implies to me that the stormwater committee is gonna be an administrative authority of the regulation, and, and they're not.
I think, well, and what we.
Well, I mean, you can carry it to the storm.
What we usually do is, we usually, you know, communicate enough to know, like, well, Carrie for the planning board and zoning board sends everything to us just for comment, and then I kinda decipher, and of course, sharing an office where there is great, but stormwater, um no, I agree that they're more of an enforcing authority for stormwater to some degree, like following on with drainage basins and things like that, so it could be confusing. Um.
Yeah, they have a lot of specific authorities that are like explicitly codified in the regulation.
Right.
And um if you read through the packet of all the regulations, it lays out the administrative authority, and it is the stormwater committee in a variety of circumstances, but not in residential, commercial, or industrial development, and not in any uh project in which there's a wetland filing.
Right.
So those are all explicitly carved out from their authority, and by virtue, and everything has a wetland filing by virtue of the fact that we are looking at it.
I agree.
Okay, so we got highway superintendent and, and it'll sell, so it'll be in highway superintendent. Okay, next page, uh we have, uh that was already crossed out prior to the effective date, and we go on to vernal pools.
Yeah, so I kinda threw that together, cause I was running out of time that day, but, so it's a little sloppy, if you guys, I think we should, we should probably work on rewording it a little bit, um.
Yeah, I think if we just kinda run through the bare bones of this, we can come back and clean it up and. Make the final recommendation of month.
Uh okay, but we have quite a bit on, on, on one of the pages here. This, okay, next one, shall include. Okay, shall include in addition to scientific definitions.
Would you like me to read the, the changes?
Uh if you'd like to, okay.
So this pertaining to vernal pools, uh shall include in addition to scientific definitions found in regulations under the Wetland Protection Act, any confined basin or depression not occurring in existing lawns, gardens, landscaped areas, or driveways, which at least in most years holds water for a minimum of two consec, continuous months during the spring and or summer, contains at least two hundred cubic feet of water at some time during most years, is free of adult predatory fish populations, and provides essential breeding and rearing habitat functions for amphibian reptile or other vernal pool community species, regardless of whether the site has been certified by the Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. Boundary of the resource area for a vernal pool should be a hundred feet outward from the mean annual high water line defining the depression, but shall not include a lawn, garden, or landscaped area or developed area in existence at the time of the effective provision in this chapter.
Okay, so that again defines our one hundred foot vernal pool, and then we have a hundred feet jurisdiction beyond that.
Right, we als, we already have the one hundred foot above, so.
Yeah.
You know, like I said, it just needs to get neat and up a little bit, but I like that.
Um next page, unen, unen, unpaid enforcement fines will be attached on personal property in the form of a lien until paid. Now, we have, we would have to set up an account for this when the time comes, so that money would go into a specific account for fine.
This one will have to change the language, and this one pro, I don't know if we need to put this as a, a thing in the bylaw, so. We already accepted Mass General Law, I believe it's chapter forty, section fifty-seven, which allows unpaid municipal fines and fees to be leaned onto the property tax bill. However, the MGL states that any type of charge to be leaned in this way needs to be approved by the legislative body. So I think that this would actually be better as a standalone warrant article. We can actually go back and look at the annual town meeting warrants from when we allowed the other two that are currently leaned. We currently lean Title V betterments, and we currently lean unpaid sewer bills, oh, and excuse me, and also demolition lees. Those three, so I think we might be better off if we go back and look at the language of the warrant articles, where we approve those, to include those under uh.
And use, and use their wording in ours.
Right, or it might, yeah, we can put it in the bylaw. I suppose it wouldn't hurt anything, but um I think it would actually be a standalone warrant article, look, nerd. Shall the town vote to add uh, add conservation fines as a municipal charge to be leaned under the town's local adoption from GL, chapter forty, section fifty-seven.
Okay, all right.
Hmm, okay.
All right, so maybe take that out. Uh I'll just put a question mark next to that.
Um and I added in all the burden going forward, burden of proof. Now, um in other towns, well, well, in Easton, that's in their regulations. I don't know if it should be in bylaw versus regulations or not, burden of proof.
I'm sorry, I was actually distracted, so.
Yeah, where we.
He fell asleep, that's, that's.
I was, I was reading something.
Well, we're doing, uh, we're doing, uh, we're doing our bylaw, and um a lot of towns have burden of going forward and burden of proof.
Oh, okay.
And so they're used, those are sometimes in their regulations. We, we don't have regulations. Are you think it'd be wise of us to put in our bylaw, or just wait until we adopt regulations?
And that's the, those are the burdens on just when one files petition.
Yeah, proving, you know, preponderance of credible evidence that any proposed work and its natural human effects and effect shall have no adverse effects, blah, 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 blah.
I think that those are probably things that are sort of already implicit probably in the process, cause obviously, file a petition, you generally, you better have the burden of presenting the merits of the case. So as a petitioner, you generally do have the burden.
Okay.
I think.
It's overkill?
I think that, I'd wanna review it a little bit, but.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't think it's incorrect to have it in the bylaw necessarily.
Okay.
It could be in a regulation though, of just what the board's expectations are, and in terms of just like how the procedures work before the board.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think we need regulations. That needs to be the next thing we do, is adopt regulations to go with the bylaw. We never did that. Um regulations will clarify the process to people and to us, you know?
Would it be permissible to have something in here to the effect of, like, the conservation commission with the approval of the board of selectmen will promulgate regulations?
I think it's already in here.
Okay, so that might be overkill, or we might be better off just recommending our own recom, regulations to the selectmen and then having them approve it. Kinda, is it similar, I would imagine, with what they do with the stormwater regulations?
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I think that something is already.
Because the big stormwater, fourteen page or nineteen page or however long it is, the stormwater regulation packet isn't in the bylaw.
And this just states this, the procedures for purposes of the local bylaw, right, cause you can't, you can't change the standards of the Wetland Protection Act.
Right, this is local bylaw, yeah.
I, I think it's fine to include it in the bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then it has the force of law within the town, so I, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. I'll do a word search to confirm that, that the regulation wording is in there.
I think it makes sense.
I was looking at the, the goal of.
I had to think about it a little bit.
The burden of proofing.
Okay.
First time, but uh.
Yeah.
I, I think this does make sense, it ties in with the, with the old bylaw, I think, and what the expectation is.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, you know, permit for work, determinations of applicability, to, um, you know, determinations of significance or non-significance. That's a new thing that we don't usually do, so we kinda have, might have to talk a little bit more about that, but then waivers, um, so you know, do we wanna offer waiver that we could waive performance standards? That would be number four down there. Um.
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
It's an expression if we have a really good reason, so we'll do that.
Yeah. And you can ignore the five oh three four B's, those are from the Easton regs, but um, I mean, Easton bylaw, oh yeah, Easton regs, and then the natural heritage, um.
Oh, I love the, the big stick of the after-the-fact filing.
Yeah, right?
That's very last page, exactly.
Yeah. So exceptions, um section fifteen, the application and permit required by this chapter shall not be required for work performed for normal maintenance um or improvement, and it goes on, and includes um utilities and existing um public utilities. Um if not, this is in line with what's in the Wetlands Protection Act. Um as long as it's not substantially changed or enlarged, provided that written notice has been given to the commission prior to the commencement of work, provided that the work conforms with performance standards and design specifications and regulations adopted by the commission. The permanent application required by this chapter shall not apply to emergency pro, projects um necessary for the protection of health and safety in public. So there are things like that that come up with the DPW, so that's in line with Wetlands Protection Act. And then, did you guys have any questions about any of that stuff on the second and the last page?
Not at first glance. Would, would we be okay on not voting on this tonight, but uh?
Yeah, I don't think you should vote on it tonight either.
Okay, okay.
We might wanna add another meeting just for this.
Okay, on the fee, are, are rougher fees, or is there something here that?
Yeah.
You were talking about no RDA fees.
Yeah, so that's section sixteen fees. Um.
Yeah, I, I would personally feel better about a site visit, because we um, no, we always wanna tell people that if they're not sure if it applies, to come see us or not. And I would rather somebody, I'd rather get a neg, give a negative determination to somebody.
Not yet, not charge them.
Right, and it's, no, we wanna encourage people to check if they're not sure, and.
Yeah.
And, and the uh, you got two NOI fees, uh we're just gonna give it one notice of intent?
Yeah, one of them has to come out. Um so should we include one site inspection, and do we wanna charge people for an inspection?
Well, you know, I think the charging of the fee for, uh would, should include one inspection.
It, oh, it does say includes one site inspection.
And then.
Additional site inspections could be.
Yeah, addition, uh okay, now you've got that on here, additional inspections.
That does put a little bit of teeth in it too, if somebody does something that's gonna require you to go out.
Do it right, do it right, and, and have us come once.
Do you know how many times I've had to go back multiple times? I'm not gonna list the projects.
Yeah, no, and I, I like that.
I'm just like a single one.
I like that because.
Come on, just keep it up.
If somebody's not doing something right, and you have to go spend time, that's your time.
I know.
And that's your payroll, and the rest of the town shouldn't be paying your hourly rate.
So additional site inspections, additional site inspections, that's what we're going to call that. But now, okay, maybe this, these have to be um kinda rea, re-audits so that they.
Okay.
NOI, NRED, uh whatever it is, but um NOI fee including one inspection, and then put additional site inspections.
Okay. How much you wanna charge?
Um after-the-fact filing, yeah, that, that's a good one, uh when we tell them they have to.
Do you like that cost?
Uh.
Five hundred bucks.
Uh I don't know, that's too steep or what, but, but it means you've already been to the site a couple of times.
Yeah.
To determine it.
Probably three times, yeah.
So there's a hundred fifty bucks right there for site inspections. So people that, especially these contractors that try to get away with stuff.
Yep.
Okay.
So how much do you wanna charge for an additional site inspection?
I think fifty dollars is fair, cause I mean, it's, it's your time, and then.
Good.
Okay, then, then what we'd have to do is set up a, uh, and a, a special, well, it would go into our, our general fund, our general fund. Wherever, ever that twenty-five dollars goes from the state, this is where that money would go.
It's probably gonna go into a different account, right?
That I don't know. I don't know if that would just be regular general fund revenue. I really don't know.
Yeah.
To be honest, it's more the domain of the accountant setting up the revenue lines for what's gonna go where, based on what kind of fund it is. That's really more serious, uh wheelhouse.
Was there anything else you guys could think of that should?
Nope, I feel like we're probably getting pretty close to uh.
Yeah.
Hopefully get, get an attorney cost a home before done.
I know. All right.
Okay, uh let's see. Where are my next on the agenda?
Oh, public input, course permits, we don't have any. Uh then we have to go to executive session.
Yeah, we're.
Well, we should have to announce that we're not going.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm all set with that. I'm just writing. Okay, uh next on the agenda is a special meeting executive session, and under Massachusetts General Law, chapter thirty, uh twenty-one, uh A and B, we are going to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, uh if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining unit or litigation of the public party, and the chair so declares that it might, and therefore, we are closing the hearing to public view.
And, oh, Mr. Chair, we just need to uh specify that we're not returning to open session.
Okay, correct, we will not return to open session, but we will close the meeting at the end of this executive session. Cut.